Answer the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the fire announcement, I'd like to introduce to you Sarah Gruber, who was appointed as an alternate to planning and zoning. She's sitting down on the last seat on my left. And welcome her to our...
Commission.
Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
The fire, in case of fire, there are two ways to exit these chambers. To my left, you'd exit through the council chamber doors, turn left, walk down one flight of stairs, and out of the building. Or perhaps the best way is at the rear of the chambers, exit through the double doors. But once you're outside of the building, please walk a safe distance away from the Secretary, please take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Present.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Nick LaFicus is absent. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Rich Suzak is here.
In case, Linda DeGray will be sitting in for the absent commissioner.
It's a good idea.
Staff reports, you have a report from the town attorney. Any questions through the, yeah, through the director for the town attorney?
Nope.
Okay. A zoning enforcement officer, we have a report, your report, Roger.
Right, in the, in the section of the report that you have from me, there is a little blurb on zoning and code enforcement.
Is your mic on, Roger? Is your microphone on?
Yes. So if you want me to, I'll just highlight it for you. On code enforcement, on June 30th, there were 73 cases pending. There were 86 new cases in July, 76 new cases in August, and 39 new cases in September. Over the summer, the code enforcement folks handled 275 cases, and 218 were closed. The carryover to October is 56 cases. We also were able to get the inspectors iPads to hopefully increase the efficiency. And the first of the top 10 blighted properties are moving towards town acquisition. I think the town actually did acquire, and the title won't transfer for six months, but in the tax foreclosure, 32 Church Street and 17 North Main Street, 17 North Main Street is the Strand Theater. So those two properties, and as part of our TOD effort, we, I was talking to the, our consultants this week about possibly using both 32 Church Street and 17 North Main Street as examples for us when we're reviewing the regulations. And then as far as zoning, wetland and aqua protection, as you know, because we gave them a certificate here, but we just highlighted for the town council that Rick Rishelli did receive a certification as a certified zoning enforcement officer in August. And also that he's been recently successful in shutting down junkyards. One on Bailey Road is cleaned up, and one on North Maple Street, and another at One Moody Road is under citation. Wetland cleanup includes 33 Post Office Road and several others. And then we note the enforcement taking place with respect to wetland zoning and aqua protection. And just for the commission's information, the zoning and wetland enforcement averages about 50 cases a month. So we've been basically reporting on the highlights, but we're working towards getting you a list of all of the cases that we have been handling, so you can see the types of complaints we get and what's being done. But overall, I think we're making good progress.
Questions for zoning enforcement?
No. Good job.
Approval of minutes, there are none.
Don't have any minutes tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. At this point in the Planning and Zoning Commission, we welcome comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in town from anyone who's present, provided you may not discuss any matter of business at this time, that is already on tonight's agenda, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission under those conditions? Anyone who'd like to address the commission under those conditions? Last call to address the commission. Hearing none, we'll move along to old business. Public hearing 2867. I'm sorry, public hearing 2590, you're right. It's a bond release.
97 Elm Street is a request for a bond release. This is, this is the McDonald's on Elm Street. That's been completed for a long time. Landscaping, as you know, is held back one growing season. That has now been completed, and they had just never requested the soil erosion control back. So I believe you have a report from Rick that both he and John Kabibbo have inspected, and all is in order, and there's a recommended resolution to approve the release of landscaping bond in the amount of $19,812, and erosion sediment control in the amount of $4,500.
Whoever makes the motion, there are two motions here that'll have to be made. They aren't combined.
I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing 2590, 97 Elm Street, map 043 lot 0002. Whereas the Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the request for the release of the landscape bond in the amount of $19,812 for the property located at 97 Elm Street, Enfield, Connecticut, map 043 lot 0002. Owner, Franchise Realty Interstate Corp., co-owner, McDonald's Corp. Whereas the site has been inspected by the planning department staff, and the responsibilities of the applicant for the landscape bond have been fulfilled in accordance to the approved plans. Therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves the release of the landscape bond in the amount of $19,812 to Franchise Realty Interstate Realty Corp., McDonald's Corp., for the property located at 97 Elm Street, Enfield, Connecticut.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, unanimous?
I'd like to put forth a motion to approve public hearing 2590, Max Construction Company, 316 Leach Avenue, Salzburg, Pennsylvania, for 97 Elm Street, map 043 lot 0002. Whereas the Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the request for the release of the erosion and sediment control bond in the amount of $4,500 for the property located at 97 Elm Street, Enfield, Connecticut, map 043 lot 0002. Max Construction Company, owner, Franchise Realty Interstate Corp., co-owner, McDonald's Corp. Whereas the site has been inspected by the planning department staff, and the responsibilities of the applicant for the erosion and sediment control bond has been fulfilled. Whereas the site has been inspected by the Town of Enfield Engineering Department, and the applicant has been found to have fulfilled their responsibilities. Now therefore be it resolved, the Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves the release of the erosion and sediment control bond in the amount of $4,500 to Max Construction Company for the property located at 97 Elm Street, Enfield, Connecticut.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Vote was 7-0-0 on those. Okay, now I get it right, 2867. Position for zoning text change to adapt a new subsection to Section 10.30.5, Enfield zoning regulations. Secretary, please take the roll, and while this is continuing, please take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Nick LaFicus is absent. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Rich Suzak is here.
Linda DeGray will be sitting in for the absent commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, this is the application that Coles filed prior to the commission coming up with their own set of regulations, and they maintained it as a pending application until finding out what was going to happen when the commission adopted regulations. Since the commission has adopted its own regulations, they now submitted a letter of withdrawal, and your protocol is to accept letters of withdrawal.
Before I do that, it is a continuation of a public hearing which wasn't closed, so I do have to open it and close the hearing. Well, at least open it.
No, you closed the public hearing, actually, on this one. It was a matter of the decision hadn't been rendered. It didn't hurt to take the role.
Okay.
But the public hearing on this was closed, it was just, they let you, it was left open in terms of making a decision. And so now it's just dotting our i's and crossing our t's and accepting their withdrawal. Later on in the agenda tonight is the acceptance of an application from them under your regulations.
Okay, I just didn't know if I had over the public not having the minutes, I didn't, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application for withdrawal for public hearing 2867.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Any abstentions? No, none against, it's unanimous. Public hearing 2874. Secretary, please take the roll and read the legal notice. Is there one on this?
Yes.
We've had this so many times, I'm not sure.
No, there's not.
Okay.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Nick LaFicus is absent. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Rich Suzak is here.
Again, Linda Gray will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Good evening, Attorney Fahey.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Reverend the Commissioner.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, in the conversations with the Attorney Fahey, they are making changes to the plans based upon staff comments, and rather than have their design professionals come tonight, make the presentation, we suggested that it would be a more inefficient use of their time and money and the commission's time if we just continued the public hearing, because statutorily you had to open it tonight. So we would continue the public hearing until two weeks, and during that time, they can get the revised plans, and we can get the commission, all of the comments on the revised plan. So if that meets your favor, that would be the...
I was going to request that they not make a presentation because of the new material that was given and the errors that you found in it. And I guess Attorney Fahey has agreed.
Right, yeah.
I understand, so...
I reiterate, the chairman said, I just...
You can't hear him.
Is it on?
Hello? Now it's on. Hope you have to press the button, it has to, is it glowing?
Has to be red.
Is the button glowing?
There you go, okay. How's that? Better? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reiterate what Town Planner has just indicated. I started with this project in...
No, pull it... I don't know.
That's about as close as I can get.
That's good.
You know, when I was younger, I used to talk louder, I guess.
I know.
I started with this project in March, after they had, the applicant had a previous application filed, and we've been fortunate in that the staff has worked with us on a couple of different iterations of this plan. And most recently, within the past week or so, we got a number of comments regarding some of the issues that our plan wasn't compliant with in terms of format, and how your, what needs to be in the plan, your, all of the things that are online. Plus, we made some substantive changes, which were actually suggested by your commission in one of the previous meetings, and by, consistently with the chairman, in terms of buffering and eliminating outdoor storage, and eliminating motor vehicles inside the facility. Since all of that stuff was on the plan that was before it, we have to change all that with a new set of plans, and submit it to the staff, which we will do within the next week. And so when we come back, what's the date, Roger?
It's two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight, we'll have the corrected set of plans with all the revisions.
Are you able to do that in two weeks, Attorney?
Yes. They've already started on it.
Because I talked to Roger, and was wondering if you'd want to withdraw and then resubmit, if you needed the time.
No, I think, I think we can, they've, these are things that are basically, can be done with, they're not to be redesigned. When you're eliminating things, you just have to change the plan, and, you know, and so there are things that can be done without doing a lot of math and that kind of stuff. So they've assured me that they'll have time to get the revised set into the commission, you know, a week ahead before that meeting, so they can look at, look at the, to verify all the things I'm telling you now.
Okay.
Well, you haven't been timed for us to receive them the Friday before.
So what would that date be?
That's what I, yeah, that's what I have to do.
Well, we would, we would need them by, you know, 10 days before the meeting is ideal. Seven, we can, we can manage, seven isn't too bad in this case, because we know what's coming.
Right, yeah. So that's what, the 10th?
So...
Are you having an ART on this one, though, too?
No, I think that everybody's pretty much on page, and I want to acknowledge the efforts of Mr. Fahey in addressing a number of concerns. I think that...
Well, I'm glad to see I'm here, too, because I was...
And so, it's, it is basically, the, you know, the public and the commission should have the plans in front of them that they're actually proposing, and that's why, we're hoping to have everything in order at the next meeting.
Because I spent a lot of time, the commission spent a lot of time on going through the plans and then reading all the material, and I just, enough's enough.
Yeah, the material itself, I mean, the written material is only going to change to the extent we're changing the substantive items, like we're eliminating parking, making the buffer, we're not going to have outdoor storage.
Some of the stuff didn't even belong there. I mean, quoting, they were quoting parts of, I don't know what regulation, but that's...
But we'll, we'll have, you'll have electronic and paper plans in Friday, which is a 10th, which I hear is, is okay?
Yeah, I mean, we will try to, I mean, worst comes to worst.
Yeah.
It can be, you know, carried over another two weeks, but we'll, we'll try to do it.
The important thing is the meeting, you had, we had to open it tonight because of the deadline on public hearing.
I know, I know. Any questions for Attorney Fahey?
No.
Not now? Okay, then let me open the public since it was advertised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Again, there's no presentation tonight, but it was advertised.
Actually, it's a little difficult for me to speak on what actually is proposed, since I, you know, I haven't seen any of the paperwork out.
Well, that's why we aren't having, we haven't either.
No, I understand that, that's why I'm reiterating it. So again, I'm just saying, you obviously know that I've been here a number of times concerning the traffic on Manning Road and all. I don't know what he's proposing, but I'm just hoping that once all these documents are in your possession, that the people or the residents on Manning Road, you know, can actually see these, because we don't want any more things to interrupt our lives. That's all I wanted to say.
Would you please give the name and address, although...
Oh, I'm sorry. Janie Liral, 12 Manning Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address, please? Again, remember, name and address, please.
My name is Heidi Thibodeau, I live at 6 Manning Road, and I just wanted to ask a few questions, something to consider before the next meeting. I would like to know what hours that they're proposing that the general public have access to this self-storage facility? I would like to have that information before I make a...
We don't know, ma'am, and as you heard, it's all going to be proposed, hopefully, for the next meeting.
Okay, well, I'm just asking if, if you could...
It usually is asked by the commission if it's not...
It will be in the materials.
It will be in the materials available to us prior to the meeting?
Right, and they, they should be available by the, by the 10th, in your, in the planning office, and you can come by and review them.
Okay, by the, anytime after the 10th, I could come by and review them?
That's what the Attorney Fahey just represented. You can just call and make sure they're there.
Okay.
Any files that are in the planning office, anybody can come in and review them, and make sure you know, you're familiar with it.
Okay, that was my most important question, and then I just wanted to know if the commission, as they're reviewing the plans, if they could keep in mind what, what they, would the impact that it would have on the residents, the increase in traffic, and then what might be done going forward if the permit is approved to measure that impact on the residents, and what things could be done to lessen any negative impact that that increase in traffic could have? And also, if there, if the application is approved, and there are any conditions stipulated in the agreement, what the commission plans on doing to ensure adherence to those conditions going forward if the application is approved? So those are just some things that I, I would like the committee to keep in mind.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the commission? Anyone else would like to address the commission?
So you just need to...
Motion to continue.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we continue public hearing.
2874.
2874.
2874.
2874.
2874. 2874 to our next meeting on October 19th.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was...
You were...
I wasn't paying attention. I agree with you.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, some in favor, any opposed, none abstention, unanimous? That's all right. It's not 11 o'clock yet. New business, public hearing 2877, 17175 North Maple Street. Secretary, please take the roll and read the legal notice.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Nick LaFicus is absent. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 5th, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2877, 175 North Maple Street, special use application to erect a prefabricated garage, 576 square feet, as an extension of an existing non-conforming residential use in an industrial zone. Mary J. Johnson, owner, applicant, map 81 lot 6, industrial I-1 zone. Dated this 22nd date of September 2017, Charles Durin, Chairman. Information is available at the Enfield Planning and Office, Enfield Town Hall, and that was advertised in the general acquirer on September 22nd, 2017, and October 2nd, 2017.
Linda DeGray will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Is the applicant here? Please come forward and explain your project to the commission, please. Again, as you, I'll come forward, please give your names and addresses.
Okay. You know, I crossed everything out, and I couldn't...
Mary Jane Johnson, 175 North Maple Street.
Mark Johnson, 175 North Maple Street, Enfield.
Explain to the commission what it is you're going to do.
I'd like to put in one of those prefab garages in the rear of my house. Right now, we currently only have a one-car garage with three vehicles and a tractor, and we really have no storage for any of our tools and stuff, so it's, it's our request that we ask, you know, ask to have that application approved to put down.
Okay.
This is one of those situations we've had before, where it's a residential use that is non-conforming in an industrial zone. If this was a residential zone, she would just simply go to the building department, and we'd review it at the building department level, but because it's an industrial zone, and I had this conversation with them about, would you like to rezone your property to residential? And the matter of fact, there's like four or five properties on that stretch of North Maple, which are clearly residential but are zoned industrial. So, but not knowing how long a process that would be, or whether people would be amenable to it, they would like to build a garage sooner than that process might take.
Engineering had concerns about legal access to apparently some acreage in the back or next to it?
Yes, that, that property belonged to my father, and he had lived in the house that I have, am living in now. So to access the property in back, he had made the two driveways. Since I bought the property, there's no reason to have that driveway going down into his property.
The property you're referencing is next door, 179 North Maple, and it has a separate driveway and access all the way back.
It does, all the way back.
All the way back, yes.
And I think also, as mentioned, setbacks. Is that cleared up, Roger?
The only other issue is, we had discussed moving the property 10 foot, feet off the property line rather than five, which the applicant agreed to.
Off the, I'm sorry, off the back property?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. The health had mentioned private wells in the area, I don't know why. I know way back that they, most of those wells were contaminated because of the tobacco use that there. I remember years ago that that was in there.
We get tested, usually the state comes and tests our water every year or two years, due to all the tobacco and stuff, and we've been fine every year.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Questions for the commission?
Because I, because I guess, just looking at your map in terms of, you know, you're going to be moving your proposed garage 10 feet off the rear lot, in terms of the side lot, and it appears that you're relatively close to the side lot, is there a problem with the side lot?
Actually, I think we discussed 10 and 10, rather than...
Oh, okay, so it's going to be a 10 and 10. So you're going to move it off the side lot, your property line, as well as off the rear property line?
If we have to.
I was questioning, why does it have to be 10 feet? Originally, when we talked about the, what we discussed, the planning department a year ago, and they said it was 5 feet. I'm just curious, I don't care, but I'm just curious, why did it go from 5 feet to 10 feet?
The reason being is that the regulation says a minimum of 5, and that's generally for like a little shed you might be putting up. But in this case, where you have a property behind you, whether that be your father at this point, or somebody else, then the suggestion was that to put a structure of the size you're putting it up, it might be better to be 10. It's a special permit, so with a special permit, the commission could determine that that was appropriate.
Right, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so he agrees with the 10?
Yeah, again, I, you know, it's just that in the future, if somebody comes along and, you know, they want to do something, and then all of a sudden, there's something so close to their property that, you know, it, you might, the present owner might not have a problem, but, you know, some future owner might, so just in case, just so that in the long term, there aren't any problems. Thank you.
Janie?
I have a question. Roger, maybe you can clarify it for us. If it's industrial 1 setbacks, it's 20 or 25 feet, and if it's residential 33, which is the smallest, it's 50 feet rear. So where are we getting the 10 from?
But for an accessory structure, it's 5 feet, and this is considered an accessory structure. So, but the intent of an accessory structure is usually for like a shed you'd bring home from Home Depot or something, and... from Home Depot or something, and not a, you know, a garage of this kind. And so it seemed like rather than imposing the side yard that you would normally have if you were building a house, like if you had a house and a garage, then it would have to be all moved over. So the, the suggestion was, worked out with the applicant, was 10 feet and 10 feet rather than five feet and five feet. I mean, certainly if the commission wanted to make it more than 10 feet, they could. I think 10 feet is reasonable. So that would probably be a condition 4A, which is 10 feet from side and rear. Because I think rather than causing you the expense of revising your plans, we suggest submit it with the five feet.
All set?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, commission? Right, if you will, anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against this application? Last call, speak in favor against this application? Any reason by the commission to keep it open? Then I'll close public hearing, twenty-eight seventy-seven. What's your desire, ladies and gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application for public hearing, twenty-eight seventeen, 175 North Maple Street, zoned industrial one, residential use, MAP 81, Lot 6. Whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has received a special permit application to allow a detached garage to be erected at the rear of 175 North Maple Street. And whereas the residential property is an existing non-conforming use in an industrial one zone. And whereas the garage is an expansion of an existing non-conforming use allowed under Section 3.40.1D of the Enfield zoning regulations. And whereas a public hearing was held on October 5th, 2017. And whereas the commission has determined that the installation of the garage will have no adverse impact on the surrounding owners, now therefore be it resolved that the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves public hearing, twenty-eight seventy-seven, for the extension of an existing non-conforming use, installation of a garage at 175 North Maple Street, industrial zone one, MAP 81, Lot 6, with the following conditions of approval. And I think that we're going to have a modification that it will be a 10-foot setback from the back property line as well as the side property line, so that we have a buffer zone for future use. And, and there's 10, does this make 11, or is this?
Well, I was, yeah, it's 11, but we'll just label it 4A, so it shows up in the right place on the-
All right, well, that, that would be a part of a condition 4A, and there's 10 conditions in all together.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. You do, you nodding your head, yes?
Yes, yes.
What's the discussion?
I just-
Oh.
Yeah, on the motion or whatever. Charlie. I understand.
Okay.
The need-
All in favor? Is the motion?
Still discussing?
She's still discussing?
Yes, I haven't got a chance to discuss, you didn't let me.
All right.
Thank you. I understand the need with wanting to build the garage on the back of the property, so on and so forth. My biggest concern is we have a non-conforming use, and I don't feel comfortable voting to expand a non-conforming use. So for me, I will have to vote against it. So I'm just letting you know why I'm voting the way I am.
Well, explain the non-conformity to Roger, please.
Well, it's, it's a residential use in an industrial zone. In my opinion, looking at, going out and looking at the residential strip up and down, I think there's five or six houses right along there.
There's at least five or six on our side, and seven or seven on the other side.
Right, it's clearly a residential neighborhood. Why it's zoned industrial, I don't know. It may be, well be one of those situations where, as, for just some members of the public, but this commission continues to go through the zoning map and make changes based upon the plan of conservation and development. So we may well want to look at that. However, it's zoned industrial one, residential is a non-conforming use. So, you know, the folks have a residential use in what appears to be a residential neighborhood, and they'd like to have a garage.
So that's all?
I understand what Roger's saying, and I understand the need for a larger place to put your stuff. But I am with, I'm going to be voting against it because I don't feel comfortable saying we're expanding a non-conforming use because that opens the floodgates to anyone who wants to expand it. So I think a variance might fit, but-
Well, I could just point out for, for the commission that you changed the regulations about a year ago to provide a mechanism in situations like this where the commission could consider on a case-by-case basis, by special permit, whether what was being asked for was in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. So it is, it is wholly within your purview to determine that it, it is appropriate or it's not appropriate. But in order, with, prior to us adopting that regulation, you would have to go to the zoning board of appeals, and you'd have to demonstrate a hardship. And it's tough to say what the hardship is in a situation like this.
It's a miszone.
Okay, I just want to say, I, I hear what you're saying, and I understand it, but seeing that this isn't a permanent structure, it's really a temporary one, it can be moved, yes, these are-
Yes, it is. There's no foundation for that.
There's no foundation, and they can-
Yes, yes.
And they can, they can be moved because I have one, and it, and I was told anytime I can move it by, not by me, but-
They're not supposed to participate.
Let me finish, please. Not by me personally, but they have equipment to move it. So at any time, it can be removed from the property. So I don't have a problem with a temporary structure. If this was a permanent one with a foundation, then I probably have more concern.
Unfortunately, for building and zoning purposes, a temporary structure is only good for six months. So he'd have a, if he went in and said this is a temporary structure instead of an accessory structure, I'd be amazed if the building department would give him-
Well, I'm calling it temporary in a, in the sense that if they were to move, the new owners didn't want it anymore, it could be easily removed from the property. It wouldn't have to be a big construction tearing it down.
Yes.
The only thing I'd like to add is that, you know, depending on when the zoning regulations actually came into effect, whether the house was there originally, and then they just got, you know, encapsulated into an industrial zone, so that in reality, it really was an industrial zone before it really started, or it was a residential zone before it became, you know, encapsulated into an industrial zone. So in that sense, looking at the neighborhood, because I did take a ride through the neighborhood, and it does look very residential, so that it would be surprising that, you know, at some point, it wasn't a residential, or, you know, some, somebody changed, the mechanism changed, so that it just got, you know, mis, you know, zoned, so that, you know, in a sense that it, you know, it doesn't appear that it would at any time in the near future turn into an industrial building, or there would be a combination of a series of lots allowed to turn into an industrial building, that it probably will be utilized as an industrial, I mean, as a residential, you know, structure for many years to come. So in that sense, I feel comfortable that, you know, it is in harmony with the neighborhood in that, you know, it, people, you know, do, you know, acquire things, and they, rather than leave them just, you know, on the lawn and behind a house and exposed to the weather, it should be protected. And I think that everybody, you know, has that right to have some, you know, protection for their equipment, so that it, it would be in harmony.
It is our error, and it's one thing that I've discussed with Roger in general, that not to, let's say, how this became the zone it is, and it happens to be livable right now as residential. It's our fault for what the zone is and isn't proper. Basically, because we haven't, for years, had the people in the office to do the planning and to do the work that needs to be done, as now we have no secretary, so we have no reports. So to punish people on our errors or our inability to produce, to me, isn't right either. Somebody want to move the question? No?
I was going to comment that-
Okay, go ahead.
I tend to think that with our new ordinance, it's not an offensive building, and I think it would fit into the neighborhood and not cause problems here. So I think I'm going to tend to vote for it because we have the extra ordinance to allow that.
The question?
Question's been moved? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Five in favor, two opposed. No abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 247 Shaker Road. Secretary, please take the roll and read the legal notice.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Nicholas Ficus is absent. Charles Lad.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Rich Suzak is here. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 5th, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing, 2881, 247 Shaker Road, special use permit application for the reconstruction of a building previously destroyed in a fire, and in the addition of outdoor storage. Section 6.30.2, activities limited to enclosed buildings and limited outdoor storage provisions. Enfield Reman LLC owner, Frank Camerata. Applicant, MAP 95, Lot 8, industrial zone 2. And that's it.
Okay. Linda DeGray will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Welcome, gentlemen, please identify yourselves.
Good evening, my name is Kiran Majmundar, registered professional engineer with LP Consultants in Enfield, responsible for some of the documentation that you see before me. To my left is owner, Mr. Frank Camerata.
Representative Camerata Truck Parts.
Owner of the property and owner of the site. The Camerata Truck Parts business has been in existence at this location for almost 57 years, and has been doing very well. The business has been growing. His one of the buildings on the property, located at this location, about 11,000 square feet, burned, fire damage about two and a half years ago. And the owner would like to rebuild on a reduced footprint from 11,000 to about 7,000 square feet. Out of that 7,000 square feet, about half is rebuilding what was not completely fire damaged, and the other half, to a total of about 7,000, would be newer construction. It's still reduced from 11,000 down to 7,000 square feet. The existing building is prefab, one-story steel frame and cladding. And the new building and rehab building will also be the same architecture and same construction. Primary use of the building will be storage. So his inventory, his parts, et cetera, will be stored within that building. So it has no lighting, no heating, just the storage and access for the equipment to pick up parts and bring them in. The site has been enhanced with consultation with the planning commission to reduce parking or streamline parking from the private right-of-way onto the regular property, although the building itself being storage building doesn't require any parking, there are no employees there. So that's an enhancement. Some additional landscaping has been added. More importantly, the new regulation for outdoor storage has also been complied with, providing outdoor storage for almost 1,200 square feet with eight-foot-high chain link fence along the right-of-way to block the view, obstruct the view from the right-of-way. Not a whole lot of new things on this property. It's an industrial zone surrounded by industrial buildings. And there is one comment from the engineering in reference to proposed roll-off dumpsters that are shown on the lower right corner of the site plan. Mr. Camerata has already discussed this with the planning commission, planning department, and that he's willing to accept that as a condition of not having it in that location because it required a concrete pad, and most of this area is bituminous paved anyway.
Right.
He's willing to take that as a condition.
Right.
Other than that, if Mr. Camerata would like to add something?
That's, that's pretty straightforward. It's cold storage, no employees, it's just for differentials and transmissions.
Questions from the commission? Yes?
I just have one small one. I noticed on sheet two of three, there's a trailer. And I'm assuming that's a construction trailer that will be gone when the construction is over? Or is that a trailer that's there and staying there?
No, the sheet two of three is existing survey.
Right.
Of what's existing.
Right.
And the three is what's proposed.
Okay, so-
That trailer will not be there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Three is proposed.
Yeah, it's still there.
Yeah.
But you're saying it's there now.
I thought he said we didn't have to bring up-
Yeah, I think it's, I don't recall right now, but I think-
The trailer, I don't see it.
Oh, the trailer is on the other property that Mr. Camerata owns. That's in this corner, if you turn the page over.
Okay, thank you.
There was small, there wasn't too much, too, I'm sure.
Okay.
But that's probably-
It was a good opportunity for Mr. Camerata to meet with town planner. Roger visited the property and discussed with the owner what the disposition of the property was. It was a good opportunity.
Roger, did we get anything from the fire department? I know the chief was in and picked up a copy, has he?
Yeah, I didn't get anything additional. He did come in and-
So they probably picked it up on the-
-pick up the plans. The deputy did tell us what a good guy Frank is. I would like to just say that Mr. Camerata just built a gorgeous building at 80 Shaker Road. He was kind enough to give me a tour of it. This commission approved it. The floors in that building, the machinery, everything is spotless.
We just added on, that was a former Parker building.
Yeah, no, but I mean, you refurbished it. What that building is today is not what it was before. And so I spent a morning, every time I meet with Frank, I learn things. He told me how his business operates and so on and so forth. He's looking to come back and expand that building at 80 Shaker Road. We did visit his site here at 247. We made some suggestions to him, and like four or five days later, I got an email that said, "Roger, they're done." That's the kind of gentleman he is. If he makes a commitment on the site, he, he does keep it. So the resolution that, that was drafted, that you have it from a memo from Jennifer, there's, there's like four things, and we got to add a fifth based upon the presentation tonight. But I talked about, about the dumpster roll-offs, and Frank says he doesn't have to have any at all. So we put in number eight, that they be relocated onto a concrete surface because he did have places- he did have places he could put them. He does that, or he can just not have them on the site. The other was on the site plans, and they could just be noted, but the site plan that was submitted doesn't note the entrance and exits from the building, which are over on the elevation drawing, so they could be noted on the final plans. The other thing is the outdoor storage is in a side yard. The fencing is fine, except it can't be eight feet. It has to be six feet. And the- so that outdoor storage has to be moved so that it's behind the building line, which can be done. So those would be the- those would be the site-specific conditions. Other than that, they're all your standard conditions of approval. And I do say that every time that we've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Camerata, he's nothing but forthright and a pleasure to deal with.
Just want to add a small comment. Thank you very much. Number one, Mr. Camerata has just rebuilt the Palomba Drive facility to his use, as well as the new 80 Shaker Road, so he's been-
It's Freshwater.
I'm sorry, Freshwater Boulevard. And he's been- he's contributed quite a bit to the economic growth of the town and the community.
And has also bought the Tilkon-Tomahawk Plan.
They've been a great corporation to deal with in the family. Yep.
Thank you.
Just one question, Roger. Why would you want an eight-foot fence? Why six? I just don't understand.
You should ask this Commission, because it's their regulation, but the regulation says six.
Close the height of the fence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is. It is.
It's there for screening, but I- whatever you'd like. I just don't understand, that's all. Just a standard that was set, and we haven't changed it up to now, so.
Six is fine.
Six is fine.
Any questions, further questions, Commission? And Roger, these are additions that you just gave. I see that-
We've added an 11A to the draft resolution. That's a very advanced issue.
Has to go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for an eight-foot fence.
They won't give it.
Any reason to keep it closed? Have you been open? All right. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Last call to speak in favor against this application. Hearing then, any reason to keep it open? Hearing then, close public hearing 2881.
I'd like to put forth the motion to approve Public Hearing 2881, 247 Shaker Road, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has received an application to rebuild a fire-damaged building, build a new addition, and add related outdoor storage areas at 247 Shaker Road, MAP 095, Lot 0008, Industrial 2 Zone, and whereas a public hearing was held on October 5th, 2017, and whereas the Commission has determined that the proposed site improvements are less non-conforming to the Enfield zoning regulations, and whereas the Commission has determined that the proposed site improvements will not have an adverse impact on surrounding properties. Now therefore be it resolved, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves Public Hearing 2881 to rebuild a fire-damaged building, build a new addition, and add related outdoor storage areas at 247 Shaker Road, MAP 095, Lot 0008, Industrial I2 Zone, with the following, let's see here, 28 conditions with an additional condition, number 11A, that states the fence shall be six feet only.
Second.
Motion's made seconded.
High. Six feet high.
Six feet high.
Any discussion? Hearing then? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous? Six, seven, zero, zero? Do you need a break there, Roger? You need a break at this stage?
No, I've just given them the conditions.
Okay.
887.
Public Hearing 2884. Secretary, please take the roll and read the legal notice. Applicant come forward.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Nick Lefakis is absent. Charles Lad.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Richard Suzak is here.
Linda DeGray will be sitting in for the absent Commissioner.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 5th, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public Hearing 2884, 35 Enfield Street, Special Use Permit Application for a sewing shop in a building located in the King Street, Enfield Street Design District. Elena Williams, applicant. Frank DePeregola, applicant. MAP 55, Lot 192, Business Local BL Zone. That's it.
Please introduce yourselves with names and addresses.
Don't look so worried.
Elena Williams, 35, Enfield Street. I live in Springfield, Massachusetts, 22 Worthing Street.
My name is Pavel Yusovkum. Here simply acting as an interpreter for her in case there's a language barrier, but I live in Agewaun.
Thank you.
I just want to know for the Commission that the site plan is by Jennifer Picasia.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Oh.
The colorful one, not the graph paper one.
The one that's uncolored. That's one done in color.
I like that one.
Very good. Questions by the Commission?
I just had one little thing.
Good.
Well, two, really. I know it says K-N-O-W on the map, and I understand that that's a, you know, that's not her, but it really is Knox. K-N-O-X. And the only other thing is, it says in the lease agreement that the address is 33. They crossed 35 out, so I'm assuming it's still 35, and they just gave you the wrong thing for the lease.
There was a typo in the lease initially. I actually helped negotiate it. That got corrected subsequently.
Okay, so is it going to be 35, or is it going to be 33?
35 is the current address.
Okay, okay.
All our documents have 35 on from the town.
Except for the lease.
That was a typo. Nothing more than that.
Thank you.
Is that it, Jenny?
Yep. I just need to be clear. You're going to be in the existing house that's there, not the-
The ice cream stand.
Old ice cream stand. Is it the ice cream, the old ice cream stand?
What was formerly the ice cream stand is what she's going to occupy as a sewing shop. Apparently, there is a residential building that's on that same lot.
Okay.
That has-
That's why I wanted to make sure.
That's separate, and I guess there's still people living there, and that's completely separate from what's-
I just wanted to be clear on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think it's been others, other things other than the ice cream shop. I think, yeah, yeah.
I think it's a great use of the building. I'm glad that she's decided to come to Enfield, and we need more trades, you know, really good people that know what they're doing.
Being a resident in the area, it's a good use for that building, because it is so small. It doesn't have the parking. It's been tried for a lot of things, and when it was the ice cream shop, it was really dangerous getting in and out of there, and they had problems on both, both the streets. And-
It's a difficult site, because the residential house has a play yard right in the back of it as well.
Right.
And this is the least intrusive, least intensive use that I've seen in the time I've been here, and there have been at least three or four people come in who wanted to do things that really didn't fit, and we kind of felt, and that's why we tried to go the extra mile, and, you know, Jen put together a colored little site plan for you, because we kind of feel like it's a good fit.
It absolutely is. There are no problems from engineer, fire, police, or the Health Department. I have one. Are you doing any changes to the exterior of the building? The outside?
No, not-
Keeping it the same.
Okay. Any further questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, then I'll close public hearing 2884. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have to. Anyone in the public want to speak in favor against the application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against the application? Last call to speak in favor against the application.
Just before you close this, I'll enter on the record that the draft resolution, we have a little different way of approaching this, but I felt it was reasonable, and I just want to make sure the Commission understands. But sometimes, so the town engineer is asking for the entrance way to be paved, in order to get that paved, she's going to need a permit from the state DOT, and in our estimation, she could be open for business without getting that done. And so what we've, rather than hold her up until that's paved, what we've suggested in the resolution is that she would have 120 days to accomplish the paving. It's a little different wrinkle than what we've done in the past, but again, it's a small business. We're trying to get her up and running.
Yeah, I was so glad to see that it had such a use. It would be, just seems to fit the place just really nicely.
I just have one comment about that. 120 days will be in the winter months, and she may not be able to get it done, because the asphalt companies start to close down once it gets-
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, it's 120 days, or I don't know what you want, May 1st or something.
I'm just thinking, for her to, you know, give her a fair chance to get it done.
Right, no, it's a good point. I mean, we just, we didn't think of that, Commissioner, when we wrote it.
Well, until so many days after the asphalt plants are open, I guess.
Yeah.
She could make it an appointment and have it done.
I mean, it's possible she could get it done if it's a mild winter, but I just wanted to give her the ability, so whatever the Commission feels is reasonable.
She could make an appointment to have it done. They're not going to do it until they can.
Yeah, but if we just put in 120 days-
Right, no, I know.
-that kind of-
Could we just do a-
If you say that she shows you a certificate that she's made an arrangement with some asphalt company or someone to do the work, that would suffice, I would think.
Yeah. I was going to say 120 days, weather permitting, because I understand what Linda's saying.
I think that that would be a better way to do it, because it could possibly be done.
And then, you know, if for some reason it doesn't happen, the planning staff can just make a note in the file, and in the spring-
Right. That's a good idea.
Either way. Okay. So that'll be part of the... Did I close it now?
Yep.
Okay. No, it is closed.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a, accept Planning and Public Hearing 2884, 35 Enfield Street, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has received an application for a sewing shop located at the King Street, Enfield Street Design District at 35 Enfield Street, MAP 55, Lot 192, Business Local BL Zone, and whereas a public hearing was held on October 5th, 2017, and whereas the Commission has determined that the proposed use as a sewing shop will not have an adverse impact on the surrounding properties, now therefore be it resolved that the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves Public Hearing 2884 for a proposed sewing shop within the King Street, Enfield Street Design District at 35 Enfield Street, MAP 55, Lot 192, Business Local BL Zone, with the following conditions of approval. And there are 12 conditions of approval with a modification on condition number seven that says it, you know, the, I guess the driveway entrance shall be repaired within 120 days of acceptable weather permitting time.
Motion's made seconded. Discussion? Hearing then, all in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous? Good luck, and welcome to town.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you. I wish you much success in that location. Public Hearing 2887, 80 Waymouth School Road. Secretary, please take the roll and read the legal notice.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Nick Lefakis is absent. Charles Lad.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Rich Suzak is here. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 5th, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public Hearing 2887, 80 Waymouth School Road, Special Use Permit Application for an accessory-in-law apartment, Table 4.20, used table for residential districts, Matthew and Danielle Mu- Danielle Muckey. Owner, applicant, MAP 68, Lot 159, Residential 88, R33 Zone. That's it.
Hi, I'm Danielle Muckey. Oh, sorry.
Just let me say that Linda DeGray will be sitting in for the missing Commissioner. Okay.
Okay. I'm Danielle Muckey, and I live at 80 Waymouth School Road.
Serge Lassard, I'm the GC who will, who have been hired by Danielle to build the addition.
I don't know if they got you, did-
Can hear you? Didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I'm Serge Lassard, I'm the GC, which I've been hired by Danielle to build the addition.
So, good night. I mean, hello. My mother-in-law moved in with us in January, so we only have two bedrooms right now, so we would like to add her own little apartment, so that she can have her freedom and we still have our privacy, and plus, we're expanding our family. So we would like to stay in, at our same house, and we don't really want to move. We love our location. We love our neighbors, so that's why we kind of, we have the land and everything, and we just thought it'd be a good idea to build an in-law apartment, as long as it gets approved.
You're familiar with the in-law regulations of the removal once, once the in-laws are gone?
Yes. We plan to turn it back into our living space.
Right.
She'll have access, right, to a mudroom, so there's no separate entrance, or it doesn't look like it's a separate housing. She, it just, it's like a mudroom that would be connected. We'll all make it into a playroom come April.
I just wanted to make sure, because sometimes they come in for the room, and they don't realize that the plumbing and all that has to be taken out.
Yes, we currently have a septic, and we got approval from the Health Department and everything.
Yeah, I want to make sure the Commission is aware of the Health Department notes, because that is crucial to this plan, and there were five conditions on that, the Health Department.
Mr. Chairman, the, as you know, you have a long list of requirements for a temporary conversion under 4.5.10, and there are, I think there's only, there are three things that we need, that we needed to put in in addition to the others. And you mentioned the, your regulations require public water and public sewer, except if you have a favorable report from the Health District, which you do. So the resolution makes note of that you're waiving the requirement for sanitary sewers. The second thing is that your regulation, regulations provide that there'll be no new entrance facing a street. The applicant put forth the argument that the second entrance that was being created really led to the mudroom and didn't lead to the apartment. Staff's interpretation of your regulation is that you really didn't want two front doors, so it looked like a two-family house. doors, so it looked like a two-family house. So, we have, but I did want to present that argument. But the, so therefore, the resolution as drafted says that second front door would have to come out. And then the third issue is, there's the question of, you have the in-law apartment, which does need to come before this commission as a special permit, but then you have the addition on the other side, which is a bedroom addition, which doesn't really need to come before this commission. And there's an issue that we need to sort out as to what actually is the side yard there. So, what we have suggested is that that be removed from this application, so as not to hold it up. So, with those caveats, you know, we recommend the approval. Also, the applicant was...
The applicant agree to that, what the Roger just recommended?
Not really. We think that the second front door is very, doesn't look, it looks very typical of a regular ranch that will go to a mudroom for, if you look at many houses, this door looks just like a normal mudroom or breezeway door to many houses in Enfield. So many breezeway are built that way.
Well, I, that may be a decision we can do now, but to remove part, the addition bedroom is what I'm concerned about. If you want to tie that, are you agreeable to pulling that out?
Yes, to send that to a building department. Send the bedroom to the building department.
Well, it would be a separate application and you'd apply to the building department and at that time, we're probably going to require an A2 survey of where your property line actually is.
Okay. We would still need a survey even though we have the plot planned from building department.
Right, you're going to need a survey when you put the foundation in anyhow. Once the foundation goes in, you're going to need a survey of where it is.
Okay.
So, I need an answer, yes or no, that you're withdrawing that part?
Yes. No, we're not withdrawing.
Yes.
Oh, we are withdrawing, exactly.
Are you withdrawing?
You're separating out the addition on the one side of the house from your application.
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Sorry.
Questions from the commission?
Okay. So, you get that money back?
So, Roger, I noticed that you had put about the new second front entrance located on the plans to be removed. I thought that was very...
Right, the way that I read the regulations and bear in mind that this commission interprets its own regulations, but as your staff, the way I read it is the intent and it's very, it's very common for in-law apartments that you don't want it to appear to be a two-family house and you want to make minimal changes to the facade. And so, the way I read it, it says there will not be a new entrance on any plane that faces the street.
Yes.
And this is a new entrance. So, we did a review with the applicant this afternoon, alternate ways that could, that you could access that mudroom that would not be visible from the street, which could be a, you know, a, an amendment, design change going forward, which if they wanted to add an entrance to that mudroom that doesn't come from the street. So, there is, there are alternatives. And I do think that, that it's in there for a reason.
Oh, I know. I agree with you, but I believe he had mentioned, you know, that it was a mudroom, so I got the impression that it wasn't going to have, the same door was going to stay there.
But it's, but it's before this commission as part of an application for an in-law apartment.
Right. And I, I would not like to see a second door. The only other thing I had was when I was looking at, you know, I was trying to compare the two and I noticed that, oh, now I lost it again. Okay, your 11, with the, talks about the termination at the end of, you know, the use. I have to find it now. It says something to the effect that, wait a minute, oh. This condition shall appear on the special use permit. That must be filed on the landmark so that works. Okay.
The only...
Yes.
The only thing that I'd like to add in terms of, you know, I have a similar house and I, we have a two-car garage. And it would be difficult when you're, you know, doing any work in the yard to have access to the house, you know, without going into the garage if the garage doors were closed. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, the intent is that you don't have a separate entrance into the mother-in-law apartment, but it appears that this entrance is really in a, an entrance into the addition of the original house, because the mother-in-law apartment is in rear. So...
I'm just saying, it's totally up to the commission.
Because looking at it in terms of, you know, the way my house functions is that I need that door, otherwise, you know, you're totally linelocked and you have to go to, into the front door in order to go into the house, or you have to go into the garage and then into the house from the garage. But it's always nice to have an access, you know, to the house from adjacent to the garage so that in case...
You've got to argue that.
Well, I'm sort of, I'm sort of just saying, you know, my, pleading my case in terms of, all right, I'm not pleading my case. I'm just looking at it reasonably. And I think that, you know, what you have to do is you have to have your main door entrance to be greater and, you know, more embellished than your side door entrance. So, your side door entrance has to be very plain and, you know, nondescript versus your main entrance if it's, you know, more, you know, has glass in it or has some kind of pediment on the top of it and it says, you know, here I am. And when you want to come to my house, you know, everybody comes in this door and this is where the servants go in, which is us people. So, so I think that, you know, looking at it, it's...
I think they're called domestic help.
But anyways, you know, just looking at this plan, you know, I think that, you know, I see the intent of the, you know, the 4.50.10 is that, you know, it's not to be a separate entrance and it can't look to be like a separate entrance, but I think this is really an entrance into the house as, you know, the main house and then the mother-in-law apartment's in the back. Right. So, you know, I would think that, you know, I would not have a problem removing that stipulation that, you know, it would make this house in addition function a lot more, you know, efficiently.
Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
I do. I like that.
Well, I'm looking at the side view. It looks like there's doors on the side, right on the side of the garage. Is there an entrance into the garage? So, there is a separate door there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Can I add that that house will be two feet back, so it will look like a breezeway, basically. And also that the, right now, it is existing one-car garage at that location.
So, this is...
And this door will go into the main house, which is going to be a new mudroom. And then another door to the apartment. So, basically, this door goes to the house first.
Correct.
And to back.
Right. And the mother-in-law apartment. So, it's not really a direct access into the mother-in-law apartment, accessory apartment, which I think is what the regulations are trying to stipulate, that you don't have direct access, so that doesn't look like. But in reality, if you'd never built the mother-in-law apartment or the accessory apartment, you could, you know, build whatever you're building because of the fact that it's two entrances into your house and it just functions a lot simpler and more efficiently.
I have a side door.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I was just going to say, I hear what Rich is saying and I understand that, but there is a side door and I don't see any problem with just having one door. It was put in there for a reason.
Anything further before I open the public? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application? Come forward.
He wants it. He wants his mother.
Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. Okay. What's the desire of the commission? Do I close it? Are you set to close, Roger? Okay, I'll close 2887.
Well, okay, we have to make a...
You don't have to. That's up to the commission. I can't make a motion.
Come on, Mary.
I make a motion that we approve public hearing 2882, 80 Waymouth Road, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning, what? No, it's 80 Way, oh, Waymouth School Road, you're correct. Wait.
It's Waymouth School, Waymouth School Road.
Oh, nice.
At Waymouth Road, there's a difference.
Yes, it's not written in the resolution, so, nope. I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing 2882 for 80 Waymouth School Road, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has received an application for an in-law apartment and a building, and just an in-law apartment, right? No building addition. Roger. It's not paying attention.
Roger.
Roger, the resolution talks about a building addition. That's struck, we're not doing that, correct?
It is a building addition. It's an addition to the building.
Okay.
And a building addition.
And, it says "and" not... That's what I'm saying. So, we want to take the "and" a building addition off. Okay, okay. For an in-law apartment and a building addition located at 80 Waymouth School Road, MAP 065, Lot 0159, Residential 88, R88 Zone, and whereas a public hearing was held on October 5th, 2017, and whereas the commission is determined that the proposed in-law apartment conforms to the Enfield zoning regulations with two exceptions, and whereas the commission is determined that the proposed in-law apartment will not have an adverse impact on the surrounding neighbors, and whereas the commission is determined that the accessory apartment can be easily integrated back into the single-family dwelling upon expiration or termination of the special use, whereas the North Central District Health Department has issued a favorable report on the septic system. Now therefore be it resolved, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves public hearing 2882 for an in-law apartment and a building addition located at 80 Waymouth School Road, MAP 065, Lot 0159, Residential 88, Zone with the following, let's take a look here, 29 conditions.
Don't we have a condition removed or something for the addition?
It's upon the conversation I've heard, you, you know, somebody, if somebody wants to make an amendment to the resolution to delete number 10, then you would vote on that and then you could vote on the motion as amended or whether...
Well, number 10 is one that's...
No, there is one, number 13, that says the addition on the west side is not part of this approval.
Oh, okay. You already have it there.
And she agreed to that, really should be in the records.
Because I'm looking at the resolution that we do have in terms of, you know, basically it states that, you know, upon the death of, you know, the mother-in-law or the person who's going to be using the apartment, it shall be reverted or can be converted into a single-family house. At that point, when it's a single-family house, that door would be an acceptable door as an access to the building. And it accesses into the mudroom, not necessarily the in-law apartment, so that it's not a direct access into the, you know, the accessory, you know, structure that we're adding for the, you know, the mother-in-law apartment. And I think that that's really what, what the, you know, the contention that I have is that if it's a direct access into the mother-in-law apartment and it faces the street, then yes, it is, you know, prohibited from being added. And if it's an access into the house and then the mother-in-law is off the house, then basically it doesn't violate that particular stipulation of the code or the regulations. So, I would like to make an amendment that we remove site-specific condition number 10.
Do I have a second to that?
A second.
Okay. So, we'll have to vote on the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment?
I'd like to see that.
Where, where, what are you doing?
We're voting on the amendment.
I know. We're voting on the amendment to leave the front, to remove item 10. To leave the front door where it is.
He wants us to vote on it.
Well, that's what I just said. All in favor. I'm voting for it.
I'm voting for it.
Five, five. I saw your hand halfway up and halfway down. Five, four, opposed, against?
They're against.
Okay. And any abstentions? Okay. It's five, four, two against and no abstentions.
Right.
Motion passes. Item 10 is removed. Now back to the main motion for approval.
Okay.
He hits you otherwise.
All in favor? Opposed?
The main motion.
And no abstentions. Unanimous on the main motion. Item 10 is removed.
Thank you.
Well done.
Okay.
Wish you much happiness and luck with your new addition.
I love your plans. I think that's great to be able to take care of your parents.
My mom did it for my father-in-law, so that's why I want to do it again.
That's very nice.
It's great that you can do that. Hopefully she cooks.
Oh.
My mother came when we did this and she didn't cook. She'd sit there and say, well, this is just great.
Well, she cooks for you. Honestly, she's expected you to cook for her.
I know. I have a husband who cooks.
Oh, that's good. I cook. All right.
No, no, I...
Would now be the time to take a five-minute break?
Did the same thing.
Would now be the time to take a five-minute break?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we have a five-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's made seconded. All in favor? Stand recess for five minutes. Stand recess for five minutes.
Manager, and apparently both the deputy mayor and the mayor have also been called. So there's a lot of emails we're back and forth. My problem is that we have coming up, and we have done in the past, trying to put in sidewalks where they don't exist for the public safety. And one of our aims is to have a walking community. And if we don't put in sidewalks, we're not going to have a walking community. If the town, on one hand, is tearing them up because right now they don't go anywhere, they're never going to go anywhere. Now, and of course, the town didn't know it, we have an abutter coming in. I understand that sidewalk may touch where this one is?
Right. And there's two chains of emails, by the way. There was one that you got in your packet originally, and then the chairman asked me today to follow you another chain, which occurred after that, and which Councilman Lee and Councilman Falk were weighing in on the issue. In one of the email chains, the town manager, and I did confirm this with him, said that what we're talking about is the sidewalk in front of Country Diner was torn up, was taken up by the town, and people started inquiring why. And so I think the decision was made that the sidewalk was in disrepair. There had been complaints about people asking for it to be repaired. And unlike many communities in Connecticut, the town of Enfield has in its code of ordinances that the town itself is responsible for repairing sidewalks, while the homeowner is responsible for snowplow and that sort of thing. In my personal experience, every place I've ever lived, and many communities I've worked in, if your sidewalk is deficient, you are responsible to replace it. So I mean, I think that's one issue. If that's the motivator for why the town decided to tear up a sidewalk, maybe there could be a joint committee of this commission and the council to look into whether it would be prudent to look at that ordinance. But anyhow, so the sidewalk was torn up, and the town manager does commit, and as I said, I followed up with him, that if that sidewalk was ever to be connected to something, that he would put that sidewalk back. And the lot 69 and 70 development was approved the last meeting of the Enfield Wetlands Commission, and is moving to this commission, and that does have a sidewalk, and that would adjourn. So there may be a resolution of this one, because there will in fact be a sidewalk. But you know, but the bigger issue is, you know, and also I got an email from John Cabibbo that the council had recently made other changes in its sidewalk policy, which he then said, so the Planning and Zoning Commission has to change its subdivision regulations. And so your subdivision regulations provide for certain standards with respect to sidewalk. I'm not privy to what the changes were that the council made. I just have an email from the town engineer's office saying, please change your subdivision regulations. So before we go and change the subdivision regulations, I think also there should be some, you know, just like you know mobile food trucks, there ought to be like, you know, a couple of members from the Planning and Zoning, and a couple of members for the council that may want to review the whole process. I believe that the issue that John Cabibbo is addressing, but I'm not sure because I haven't seen what the changes in the sidewalk policy are. But as I understand it, it was where they were doing roadwork, and instead of putting the concrete all the way across the driveways, they were only replacing the portion of the driveway that went, the portion of the sidewalk that went across the driveway with asphalt. That may or may not be acceptable to this commission. I don't know. But it really ought to be something that was considered by both groups, rather than having a memo come over that said, oh, please change your subdivision regulations, because the subdivision regulations are the purview of this commission. So that's why the chairman asked that it be put on, just to brief folks. It may not be anything you can deal with until the new council in January, in terms of, but it really is important that you designate where you want sidewalks and where you don't want sidewalks. And as the chairman says, if we don't start and put them in, we'll never have them.
Yeah, Hazard Avenue, you know, we're never going to get them.
Didn't the state just pass an ordinance this year or last year about that we can't require sidewalks in some areas?
That was off.
I'm not, I haven't been in the loop on any of this, as I say, other than the whole chain of emails that the commission chairs followed it to me, and then the email that I have from John Cabibbo asking us to revise our subdivision regulations.
Oh, I haven't seen that one.
Which I don't think the chair was even aware of. So as I say, subdivision regulations are the purview of this commission. And you know, I know this commission, over the years, has worked very closely with the town council as appropriate, but it ought to be like a committee that, you know, takes into account the, you know, responsibilities of the town council and the responsibility of this commission, and maybe comes back to both groups with a recommendation.
There is part of the, I guess, the emails that are missing, because I have a neophyte on the computer, I'll tell you, the best way to get ahold of me is by landline, because I can do some emails, but once it gets down this way, sending copies, I messed up, there's something, there's one missing, as I told them. So I tried, but the question was whether P&amp;Z knew about it. I said to my knowledge, P&amp;Z was not aware of it being torn up or anything, or involved in anything dealing with it. So that we were not, to my knowledge, weren't involved. But I wanted you to know that I had this communication going on. And I agree with Roger. I would like to work with the council. I don't know why we weren't informed by them, but this has happened before. I talked to Roger on the Roads 2000 somewhere, where they were changing road intersections and so forth.
That was the change of the sidewalk policy. I watch the town council on a fairly regular basis, and Roger's right. It was because, I think it's Deepwood, one of those streets that they were redoing.
Yes.
They had concrete sidewalks, and they were going to put the paving in the driveways, and the property owners en masse went to the council.
Yes.
And so they agreed that for that particular section, they would do the concrete, and that they would then look at their sidewalk regulations. So I don't know if that meant that they're going to get together, or if they have gotten together, but it hasn't been that long since that.
Well, they vacillated on sidewalks. In Whitakers, I believe it's Till Street, has an amicite sidewalk. And that was at that time that they did put in amicite sidewalks. And then they decided they did not look too good in neighborhoods, in residential neighborhoods, and the council went to cement sidewalks. And the zoning regulations, I think, also required that. Now, all of a sudden, they're back to, well, not all cement sidewalks, they're going to go.
It's all about money.
Well, yeah.
You know, I followed that for a little while, and you know, I do agree that, you know, obviously, there should be some continuity in either the sidewalks or the driveways, and that, you know, what could possibly happen is when you have two dissimilar materials that sort of join each other, that you could always get unequal settlement, or unequal frost movement and whatnot, and that, you know.
That's like my driveway.
Yeah, so that, you know, if you have a driveway, you know, basically, you know, or a sidewalk, you should try to make them smooth and level. But you know, one of the things that that happens is that, you know, just when you're removing snow, I know from personal experiences that, you know, the snow gets removed a lot easier from, you know, a blacktop, or, you know, a surface that can actually accept a little bit of heat gain during the wintertime, and it doesn't form ice as easily, so that, you know, access, you know, through that kind of a, you know, continuum, you know, into a driveway is a little safer. But you know, I think that, you know, what we need to do is actually sit together as a committee and make some kind of a policy, so that, you know, we can, you know, agree on, you know, what the best solution is. And no one's solution is good, you know, everybody, you know, either/or solution has its merits, but you know, what we need to do is sort of try to figure out what the best solution might be.
Well, also, the problem is with, and I think we're going to get probably more as development goes along. Hazard Avenue, we required Hartford Hospital to put in sidewalks. The doctor that just came in, we required sidewalks. In fact, that's mentioned, I believe, in one of the memos there. I don't know how long it's been on that, across from Johnson, all those buildings, plus the, there's restaurants and so on and so forth, that whole development there, those sidewalks. I don't know how old those are, if they go and start tearing those up. I don't know.
Well, also, when the.
I like Roger's deal that we sit down with them, and maybe if they, you want to make a motion and have the officers, or the secretary and the officers, the commission sit with, I believe, I don't know, Rich, do they have a, what do you call it, sidewalk group? Is that Joey Bosco?
They have a Public Works Committee.
Is that Joey?
I think the Public Works Committee handles that.
If we could send them maybe a message, and I don't know, that we meet with them, so we can have at least some understanding of what they want, or what we can do. And I know engineering would like, I know their excuse, when it was in the paper, at least whatever was reported by the paper, was bottoming out on the cement, is not, I guess it's easier to make the amicite coincide with the street and the rest of the driveway.
It's easier if the apron, they have to replace the apron.
You're right.
So if they replace the apron with blacktop, and then they have to stop and put cement down, and then, you know, if there's any difference.
Well, they insisted I had a brand-new driveway, and they insisted they had to redo my apron, which was perfect.
I know, I know.
And I now have a gap of three inches between where their apron is and my nice and brand-new driveway. But they insisted they had to do it, and I know that was one of the things that they complained about, was that they didn't want to change.
Mr. Chairman, just one other piece of information, is that when this commission reviewed the capital budget proposal of the town manager this year, you actually added a recommendation going back, as part of your review, that the town set aside additional funds in the capital budget, and you designated certain areas where you believed that sidewalks should be put in. And I think in the email chain that was going back and forth, the town manager says there's no money in the capital budget for sidewalks. So the recommendation from this commission was in fact to add money to the capital budget for sidewalks.
Roger, how does that factor in that it's a state road? The state doesn't have any say at all in whether we take up sidewalks or put down sidewalks, because that's probably in the state right of way.
Well, this was in a state right of way, site in the state right of way, but the town took it out.
I know.
So I don't know if you want a motion to have us, have the officers or the commission meet with their subcommittee and see what we can do?
Yeah, he said, town manager said the town has not scheduled funds for sidewalk improvements till FY '29.
I know, like, what?
Two years. Well, no, so they're going to be tearing out a lot of sidewalks, if that's the case.
Oh, we have to add money to the capital budget, so that in a situation in which they are deteriorated, we don't lose a sidewalk.
I know you, people don't have a lot of spare time up there in that office, but could you possibly check what the new state ordinance is on that, too, about, it's something to do with.
It's off-site improvements.
Off-site improvements.
Yes.
That we can't require them to put a sidewalk in.
Oh, you can require them to put a sidewalk in the frontage. That was a case, that was a case law situation in which the, a community was trying to get them to make improvements that extended a considerable distance from the site. So I mean, a sidewalk is right in front of it. It's when you want to say, half a mile down the road, widen it, put a sidewalk down there.
In other words, like, we're making connections between this sidewalk and the one up the block.
Hey, Roger, now, definitely, that's, he's saying fiscal year '29, now that's accurate? Is it really fiscal year '29 before they've set aside?
I'm only going by what is in the email.
Can you double-check and see, because maybe it's '19 instead, instead of '29? Because I mean, that's a long time for not to be any sidewalk funds. I don't know if you can verify.
Somebody hit the wrong key?
Yeah, hit the wrong key, because we're looking at it going 12 years. Wow, that's a long time not to deal with.
I can ask.
Why have a subcommittee when there's going to be no funds for 10 years?
Okay. Yeah, you're probably right, I would hope. Well, what do you, I don't know, it's up to you. What do you want to do? You leave it the way it is, it wouldn't go nowhere?
I think that until you make sure that that's fiscal year 2019, and not fiscal year 2029, there isn't much.
Yes, there is. They can transfer funds.
No, 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 there isn't much, there isn't a need for urgency, because we have plenty of time to set a policy between now and 2029.
Well, I think we should, we need to address whether, you know, we should be replacing the sidewalk that has been removed. And in terms of, you know, it's one of those kind of things where, are we going to let that, you know, act, you know, go, you know, unresolved for, you know, 12 years or something? You know, I think that there has to be a resolution to that.
There's also the dealing.
So by, right.
If you're going to put in a building, let's say anywhere on Hazard Avenue, and we say, put in a sidewalk, what are you going to do?
I know.
Are you going to put it, are you going to agree to put the sidewalk in, or why would you put it in?
And you have the pending request from the town engineer's office for you to revise your subdivision regulations to comply with the policy of putting asphalt across the driveways rather than the concrete. So, so I mean, it's sort of, there's a whole, there's like three or four really issues that really ought to be fleshed out in a joint discussion.
Well, I would just like to know, for my own satisfaction, if it's fiscal year 2029, or fiscal year 2019.
That's not the debate right now. We can find that out.
Along that vein, what I'd like to do is make a motion that we establish communications with, you know, the Department of Public Works, and the, you know, Planning and Zoning Commission have, you know, a, you know, a subcommittee, you know, forums, so that we can.
I don't know about Public Works.
Well, I thought they were.
The Department of Public Works, but the policy was actually put in place by the town council. So I was suggesting a public, whatever committee that the council wants to refer to, but some committee of the council, they could come up with a special committee if they wanted.
Correct. So that, at least there's some dialogue between, you know, planning, zoning, and the appropriate, you know, entity, you know, from the town, so that we can all get on the same page and along, and establish some kind of a policy as to what is acceptable and what is not acceptable.
Yes, and I think that if we all check our plan of conservation and development, we will see that we're supposed to be a walkable community.
That's what I'm saying, that's the trouble.
Kind of hard to do without sidewalks.
I think you need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
By the direction of the output that I told, he, our town manager told the director to take it out.
Yeah, they did, to tear it out. Yeah, they have. Okay. So, yeah, this would be that the officers meet with a subcommittee of the council, I would guess. And, I'm sorry.
Would that be with this council or the next council?
It would probably be the next council, whichever one, when it gets set. I mean, they may not want to talk to us. Some, this, it would go to this mayor right now, and if he wants to set it up, he will. If not, it'll wait till the next mayor. Or, oh, he's not running, I guess, so.
Well.
Okay, so all in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, and we'll go forward with that. Next on the item is the town Enfield High School Certificate of Zoning Compliance. You got that in front of you? Roger?
I think you have a copy of a letter I sent back to, you know, everybody who's been involved. We finally did get the 72 pages of Asbeld drawings. I can report that, as you read my email, I was very complimentary about the building and so forth. And in general, what was done, there were some issues that needed to be addressed. There's a couple of situations in which there's more than a 24-inch drop-off, which needs a fence, so we indicated where that was. There was, there's probably a half a dozen trees that are dead, that need to be replaced. There's some dumpsters that are not screened. I think there's pictures of dumpsters that are, I'm not sure if you've seen them, but there seems, and then there, the major issue is the photometric Asbeld they gave us was the exact same as, I mean, was the, was the photometric that was on their approved plans. It wasn't an Asbeld photometric. The issue is that the photometric plan that was approved by this commission said that there'd be no light leaving the site, and the light from the stairwell has been intruding into the neighbor's property. And there have been many, many meetings with the building department and the fire department, and planning in terms of ways in which that can be corrected. So what we have indicated to the, in our letter there, that they need to resolve that issue, that the light should not be leaving the site, and that when they, when they get that resolved, they need to submit a photometric that tells us what the foot candles for the light are, and it has to be generally consistent with the one that you approved. Once that's done, we can recommend to this commission that you approve the full certificate of zoning compliance, which is, which would lead to the full certificate of occupancy. This does not take into account any building, any electrical, mechanical, structural issues that the building department is still working through. This is only deals with the elevation drawings, the site plan, and the general layout of the building. So that's where it is. I sent a request out to the architect of record this afternoon, and said I was meeting with the commission tonight, and was there an update to that email? He said that there have been some change orders that have been issued to Amar, to Amar, who's the gentleman, who is the contact person for Gilbane Construction, and he asked Gilbane to update me further on what they're doing, but I didn't hear further today. So we'll continue to be on top of it. I do have a picture of what the light, it does look like at night from the neighboring property. That has to be addressed. It's not consistent with your approved plans.
The neighbor hasn't addressed us, but I guess he's been working with you, is it?
Well, the neighbor, what we did do when, when the, at one point was, when they made certain changes, we asked them whether those changes were addressing his issues. He doesn't believe they've gone far enough yet. So he wrote back that he wanted to appeal our decision to the town council. We didn't really make a decision, other than just ask him whether they addressed his issues. So there's nothing to appeal. If he did want to appeal any decision that we were making on this, this is, this is, would be our advice to this commission on the certificate of zoning compliance, so he would, you know, he'd come and speak to the issue if the certificate of compliance is on the, is on the agenda as an action item. Tonight is just on there as a report for informational purposes. I think the good news is, we're almost there. But it's one little thing we got to do, but it will take some cooperation on a bunch of folks, people's part.
But the thing is, it's been bothering the neighbor there tremendously, and I guess, how long or how severe a problem is it for them to address?
Well, I don't want to speak for the building committee, or the architect, or the Gilbane Construction. I know that everybody shares a desire to fix the issue. I think that there, that staff of planning, fire, and building have indicated ways that the situation could be resolved, and I'm not sure what the change orders that were issued, that I was informed of this afternoon, I'm not sure what they say. So we'll just have to wait and see.
Must be awful.
It's, you know, when you talk about the overall cost of that project, the cost of making the changes, so that light will not protrude onto the neighborhood, really are a small little, small little amount of money, which, as my understanding is, is available in the, in the budget that was adopted.
Oh, okay.
But I'm just speaking on what I've been told. I can't attest to that.
Any questions for Roger?
On that subject, no.
Okay. Okay, correspondence. I have, and I noticed Charlie brought it in, too, and I've talked to you before about tiny houses, or small houses, and I didn't know if in our planning sometime that we got to talk about, and I'm talking tiny houses, and then this other one that Charlie brought in, and I did, too, dealt with similar but different. They seem to be moving in other areas for single individuals, or two people, to live in, and wondering whether or not we would have an area in town that we could zone, or use that. The other is this article that came in, and it's a similar type of building, only these are called granny pods. And this would sort of take away this type of building that you have here, and would be only temporary. And I didn't know if this would be something that we would also want to consider for our regulations to allow them. They're connected to your own sewer through the house, and so on and so forth. The power is your house. But it's interesting, if you didn't read it, it was in the J.I. on September 28th. I imagine that's why Charlie brought it in, as something to consider. I imagine that's why Charlie brought it in, as something to consider, and the...
Well, the other thing I was considering is, we don't have any in-town assisted living facilities for seniors that need to be in a nursing home. They have to go out of town to get them. That would solve that problem a little bit, if they could have a granny pod in their backyard and, and live there and get the assistance they need there for a flat rate of $10,000 versus $8,000 a month at some nursing home.
Well, I have a quick question too, because it made a comment in the article about municipalities have until Sunday to opt out of the option for the structures nicknamed granny pods. So what does that mean? Have, has our municipality been consulted? Did we opt out? Did we not? What's the situation? I don't...
I don't think, that was the state. I read that in Hartford Current, and they said that the towns had until last Sunday to opt out. And so I assumed, in theory, it means we're stuck with it, but in, in all intents and purposes, every town has separate zoning, so it really doesn't affect us. I think it's a great idea. It just doesn't affect us. They can't make us do it.
I don't know how the, how the state can...
They can't.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I, I don't know. That's something to look into, but I think we, it's something that we could consider for zoning is all, and the next time that we have our planning meeting, is whether or not it's something that you would want to consider.
Yeah, I would.
I would think that the town would have been notified through either the American Planning Association, or Connecticut Builders, or somebody if there was a proposed state statute out.
Well, I don't, I don't know. This has some good suggestions in here about how the distance is and so forth. You want this copy?
Sure, absolutely.
Or...
You can have my copy if you want.
Or have both copies, maybe?
Underlined in, I circled the municipality.
Then maybe you could send copies to...
Oh, gosh.
But the other, the others have been written up in, I believe, another, in the planning magazine that we used to receive, the other pods, and people have found them very useful for singles and also newly, newlyweds who are...
Still received.
Yeah, yeah.
In my, in my planning classes that I've taught in graduate school, I always, in my housing classes, I always ask my students as one assignment to design a house that couldn't be any bigger than 400 square feet. And it's amazing what you get back in terms of what you can, what you can live within a 400. You know, people in New York City think nothing of living in 400 square feet.
I don't think much.
I don't know what the size of this room is, but it's certainly bigger than 400 square feet. But, yeah, we, I mean, we'll look into it. The only thing I want to say about housing, and particularly housing opportunities, is there is a disconnect between your zoning regulations right now and your plan of conservation and development, and the only multifamily housing you allow in this town at the present time, you have to have 60 acres. And there's really no rhyme to reason to why that you need to have 60 acres. There's probably only about three sites that qualify. So one developer has, working with staff, proposed a regulation that would allow multifamily housing on 20-acre parcels, and we did, we did a check, and there's probably maybe four or five parcels that would qualify under the 20, 20 housing. And this is, this started out, as you recall, was there's an approved housing development on South, South Road that was approved as elderly, and it came in as we would like to convert it to market rate, and as part of the whole conversation about market rate, there's, there's an application that has been filed for a new zoning section called flexible large area zoning, and it would, it would provide for multifamily in those areas that are currently zoned residential, but in but, but a but, commercial, and industrial, and it would be like a transition zone. So it may be, you know, it, it may be that we, we need to address all of the, because we have multifamily housing, and we have many multifamily developments that have been approved over the years in Enfield, that exist in perfect harmony with the surrounding areas. But currently, the only way you can apply if, unless it's elderly, is if you have 60 acres. And that's really a large amount of land to require for housing.
Well, that, there was a reason for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just throw that out there. The application came in, the application came in two days ago, and we'll be, we'll be sending it out to CROG, and then it'll be moving through.
Is this new, or is this the one that you said was approved previously?
Well, it's, it's from, it's from the developer who owns the, the approved elderly housing on South Road. And he originally approached the town as to whether there would be a mechanism to convert that approval to market rate rather than, than elderly.
Is that the, that one, I believe, also is the one that we ran into trouble because we weren't, it was, had no basements.
Hmm?
It violates our regulations. It has no basements, and we were taken to court over that, and fortunately, we won the case, because another one we turned down because it didn't have basements, and we referred back to that one.
Right.
And because we weren't informed that this didn't have basements, and it was left up to this commission or the commission at that time.
Just got overlooked. I think we were informed, it just got overlooked.
Well...
Right. Well, the chairman asked me to look into the question of basements and whether we should be requiring basements.
Well, that's another thing. With the...
And so this regulation is drafted such that it, it sets up criteria of when basements would be required and when they wouldn't. So there's, there are arguments on both sides of that, and, you know, with respect to the technologies that exist today, there are many, many successful developments that, in the Northeast, that do not have a traditional basement below ground. Some portion of the property might be below ground, but buildings, building slab on grade is done all over in the Northeast now. So it's up to, it'll be up to this commission to evaluate it and listen to the arguments and decide what you want to do.
We do have building slabs on grade.
Hmm.
Well, I...
So just as an update of a...
I don't know. I'm just saying, if that came back in, as is, we'd probably have to require them to have sidewalks to be, to be up to our own regulations, plus to go along with that court case.
Yeah, I'm not familiar, I'm not familiar with the court case, but the, I did, you, you did point out that, and I did discuss basements with them, and that's why they, and I said, you got to address that, because the regulations do require basements. And so their proposed text amendment does have language in there that addresses the basement issue, but it addresses the basement issue in a way in which the commission can make a finding that you don't need them.
Okay.
So...
I know what they did at the time also, though, was allowed for storage in the upper...
Third floor.
Third floor.
Yeah.
And that took care of not having the basements.
Yep. So a quick update on, on the granny pod discussion. The Public Act is 17155, so it's, it's not codified yet, but at this point, it's, it's too late for us to do anything about it because, and we'd have to check with the town attorney on this, but it's the legislative body that has to opt out, and it would only be after the zoning commission has had a public hearing first. So we haven't noticed anything.
Is it money attached to it? Why would we have to go to them to, to allow it?
Well, it's just that the legislative body has to determine whether the municipality itself opts out of the state requirement. We're not a legislative body. We're just a commission. So...
Actually, we are a legislative body.
Well, we are, yeah, well, we have the regulations, but it specifically, I mean, unless there's a definition in here...
You mean, we can't...
Like the town council can?
Yes. Well, so it says here...
We can't allow it?
Municipality...
The town council probably would have to be the one who opt out.
Exactly.
In order for us to opt out of the state law for the granny pods. So they have to do something that would allow us to opt out, which in turn would allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to, to not do it, or do it, whatever we wanted to do with our regulations.
Right. And so at this point, it, it may be too late, and, which I think we need to look into. I think it's a great idea, but...
We could do it ourselves, though, still.
Well, you would put conditions on it.
Well, so now...
You could put conditions on it, but it's state.
Oh, of course, you'd have to. They're right in the paper there. It has to be something.
Commissioner, what is the citation? I mean, what's the act?
So it's Public Act 17155, and it provides that a municipality by vote of its legislative body, or in a municipality where the legislative body is a town meeting, may opt out of the provisions of this section regarding authorization of the installation of temporary health care structures, provided the zoning commission first holds a public hearing in accordance with provisions of 87D of the general statutes, affirmatively decides to opt out, states upon its records the reasons for such decision, and publishes notice of such decision in a newspaper.
There's no money involved. Why would that involve?
But if the commission is of a mind that there might not be a bad idea, then we might...
You could do it anyway and copy their law.
You're right.
And if we think it's a good idea, we can just put some conditions on it.
Right. So we, we need to come back with further information on that, ask for the commission.
So it may be worth it to ask the town attorney what our options are at this point, because we may as well revise the zoning regulations to include this, so that anyone looking to do anything would be able to look in our regulations.
You've got an aging population.
Not everyone can afford to build it.
And plus, we need, yeah, we need the input from the community too, so, as well, you know.
I would say in the last three months, we've had one individual come in and ask about a granny pod, and we've had one individual come in and ask about a tiny house.
I mean, it's...
But if they knew it was available, you'd probably get more.
Right.
There's, there's the problem of it not, the public at large not knowing that it's even an option.
Right.
That's, that's it.
And if anyone went to our website, despite this being a state law, they wouldn't know that that's allowed in Enfield, unless they look to the state for zoning, and nobody really does that.
So, I mean, the question is, what notification did the town even have under that?
You'd have to check with the town manager or the town attorney.
Yeah, we'll have to check and find out.
Didn't bother to tell us anyways. They didn't bother to tell us.
Roger, do we have a work session set up?
We have a work session set up for next week, as a matter of fact. You have a workshop with, with your two, with the two consultants. The first, first, first part is the presentation by Forward Planning, Forward W R D Planning, on the results of their marketing study to date, and want to get your feedback on it. And then the second part will be a presentation on initial thoughts on where we're going with the zoning, zoning portion of it. And I met for three hours this week, and with the, on the zoning portion of it, and we were looking at a couple of things. One of the things in their contract is they have to look at four sites, and with respect to what's allowed now and what, what someone might envision could be allowed. So one of the suggestions I had was, since the town will be taking title in six months to the Strand Theater and to 32 Church Street, that those might be two that we would start with. So, you know, we'd, we'd want your feedback on that. Our thought was, they are Thompsonville, they are within distance of the train station, and so the question is, the Strand Theater, if we didn't change the regulations at all, what could we do there? And then we'll start and say, well, what would we like to have there if we did change the regulations, and then say, okay, if that's what we like, what do we have to do to the regulations to get there? Then we'll have real life, specific examples, rather than say, oh, well, you know, maybe we could do. I mean, we've got an actual, so the Strand Theater sits there, it's, and it, it's, it's an, it's, you know. The other thing is, taking a look at zoning, also taking a look at the area around the train station, the consultants are going to be reevaluating the question of whether we should be keeping the casket building. That is a, you know, an outmoded building that doesn't meet any of the design requirements of a modern building. Right now, the thought has always been that there would be a walkway built over to it, and it would be part of a retail on the first floor and a, and a housing on the second floor. I'd have to say, as somebody who lived two, two, two houses up from an elevated subway in New York City for several years, I'm not sure who would want to live in that building having trains run by it every so many minutes. So, I mean, what we're trying to do is reevaluate some of the assumptions that we've been having with respect to that area over there as part of this. And so that's, you know, a conversation we've got to start and have, and we, we look for you to, you know, come with your creative hats on.
Would you send out then emails to remind us that we have the meetings?
Right, and it's...
What's the date? That's next Tuesday.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
And I know this is selfish of me on my part, but I can't make the second Thursday of the month. I already have two other meetings, and I know that, you know, is there some way, some times that we could make it like the fourth Thursday to go to these workshops? I, I know this is kind of a selfish thing, but...
It's all right, as long as it's a Thursday. I mean, that's what you say.
I just can't make the second Thursday.
All right, that's no problem.
So I know this meet, this workshop's already...
Which one's set?
This one's already set, but going forward...
Well, does it affect anybody on the fourth?
The consultants.
Huh? Well, no, I'm, I'm, this one we keep, but...
I'm not saying change this one, but in going forward...
No, no.
All I know is set, is set Thursday aside, and if you can't, that's fine.
I mean, I...
I don't care if it's the fourth.
I hate missing them, because there's so much to be done, but I just can't make them.
Do we always have four Thursdays? Maybe not.
I know when Commissioner Falk was here, and he had conflicts with the Fire Commission, he used to rotate, you know, and one Thursday, come, come here, and one Thursday, go to the Fire Commission, so that's...
I'm doing that with two other meetings already. I can't do this, can't do it three.
All right. Well, then we'll set them. Just keep a Thursday open, and then we'll just check on what Thursday's available to the commission. But next Thursday then, okay, what's the date? September, October?
What's the date on that one, Roger?
It's a week from, week from today. It's the 12th.
12.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I do have a couple of things I want to highlight in my report.
What clock, Roger?
Huh?
Seven o'clock?
Yes.
Here or downstairs?
It's either in the infield room, or it's at the training room of the, on 150, you know, where the headquarters of the Dial-A-Ride is, and over here on High Street. Not Dial-A-Ride, the Magic Carpet. We've met over there before.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we'll let you know where it is.
It's set way up and back. Okay, so send that, let me email.
Yeah. There's a couple of things on our project activities report, which we do for the director of Development Services and the town manager. These Connecticut, State of Connecticut is updated, they're updating their plan of conservation and development, and what they do is, when they update it, is they establish areas in which they either call them villages, or growth nodes, or development, what have you. And then depending upon what that area of your town is designated, when somebody goes in to ask for state assistance, they review it against that. So if they have an area of your town designated as conservation, but it happens to be a prime development site, you know, you need to work to get it designated the way that is consistent with your plan of conservation and development. So we, Jen has been going to the workshops on this. We have until October 16th to comment on it. We have until October 16th to comment on it. And again, basically, it's making sure that nothing is going to go in that plan that's going to trip us up going down the road because the state plan ought to be built off of the local plans rather than the state plan saying what your local plan is. There are, and in some instances, you have old industrial parks that were built along stream beds, for example. And I know like the Quinnipiac River Industrial Park in New Haven is example of this. And the state just came in and said, oh, it's a river there, and so that's all conservation. But it's been an industrial park for 200 years or what have you. So, you know, those are the types of conversations we have to have. So we're working on that. I did provide you the information on the Amazon corporate headquarters proposal.
Article in the paper was that the state was not going to support Enfield. They were supporting, I believe, Bridgeport and one other major city.
Yeah, but the thing about it was...
There was an article that the section, I guess Holyoke and a few other areas, Springfield itself took a vote, that they supported us in doing it because it would also be a benefit to them and to their communities, and so they were...
Yeah, that was the Chamber of Commerce did give us a letter of support.
So they had sent letters. So can we continue, or does that mean we, can we continue ourselves to request it?
Well, that's what I, that's what I just wanted. So when this was being done and it was put together in a very short timeframe, I didn't want something to be in the paper that was completely unknown to the commission. And so I did call up the chairman and let him know what was, what was going on. The, in order to accommodate nine million square feet on the mall property, the only way we did that is if we went to six-story buildings and four-story structured parking. Now, the six-story buildings would be retail on the first floor. So you take the existing Target and you put it on the first floor of a building, and then you could have corporate offices above that and perhaps residential. And when you, so we were able to accommodate, you know, the nine or 10 million square feet, but our regulations currently don't get you to six stories on that site. So it's something that this commission has got to start and think about. So, but if you think about what we have right now is we have a mall that's basically, you have the Target that's there, which is 125,000 square feet, which is a viable store, and you have some viable tenants left in the enclosed mall itself. Outside of that, there's no there, there. And so it is possible to have a whole new vision as if you go back and read the plan of conservation and development for that area. You contemplated housing over. So when we changed our regulations this summer, we do open up that possibility of housing. And so following, putting that proposal in, Mike Sorriello and Peter Bryington and myself met with the mall management. And what our thinking is, and we've asked the mall management to work on this, the mall is owned by a bank, and so we need to get the bank involved. But what we would like to do is rather than sit back and continue to get different proposals on, you know, we've had proposals from putting in soccer fields to building, building all kinds of other things, and they're all like disjointed. So the thought is, okay, so we put together this little thought of what could go there if it was Amazon. Why don't we flesh that out, work with this commission on what you would find acceptable on that site? Why don't we then, in partnership with the bank and the mall, current mall management, put out an RFP and see if we can solicit? Because if we don't put the vision of what this town would like to see there, you know, we have to, you know, we have to drive the market a little bit, and it would be really nothing ventured, nothing gained. I mean, we, so the mall management, we met right here in this room, is, you know, working that through. But I think that sort of cooperation between the Economic Development Commission and this commission in terms of, you know, taking the, taking the vision you put in the plan and saying, well, how can we make that come to fruition? Because like right now, there are various proposals that are like maybe another big box home, you know, well, there's like two major players, and one we already have in town and one we don't. So this one that we don't have in town is thinking of going there. So we could either have a lot of them all taken up with that, which would be one story, whatever, or that could be incorporated as part of a multi-story, multi-use center. So I'm just putting some of those ideas out there in terms of letting you know that, you know, even the efforts if we don't get Amazon, and we know it was a long shot, but it was...
No, that's what my question, does that mean as far as the town's concerned, it's dead because the state isn't going to back us?
Well, at the end of the day, it's Amazon's choice. And there are some communities in Connecticut that are going directly to Amazon.
But are we going to?
Yeah, and so my understanding is, we went through the Metro Alliance process, which then submitted to the state, which then decided what their process was going to be. But the other issue with the mall is that it was approved as one site, over 100 acres, and consistent with your zoning regulations that said you had to have a site of so many acres with so much frontage. Over the years, whether it was for financing reasons or what have you, it's now like seven, eight, nine different parcels, but it's nothing if it isn't the whole parcel. So somebody really can't come in on just the Sears portion. It doesn't comply with your regulation. And this commission, as far as I can find, never approved it being divided up into those entities. So I think that there is some leverage that the town has in terms of how we, how we develop that site. Because basically, you know, there are, there is quote, "seven different owners" of what was originally the Westfield Mall on the records, but whether or not those are from a zoning standpoint, the owners, I think in many ways, companies were divided up for financing reasons, and then somehow it just morphs into a separate entity. And we finding that on the Freshwater Plaza issue, too. Is it Freshwater Plaza? The Freshwater Plaza where the Home Depot is, and they want to put a restaurant on the pad, and we continually have this dialogue with them is, what actually is that shopping center? Or the third one we have with respect to that is the Kohl's proposal for the pylon signs. They have an entrance that is between Denny's and Burger King, and that is the only way you get to the medical buildings down in the back. The medical buildings are, have a sign that says Elm Plaza Medical Buildings. The Kohl's Plaza is called the Elm Plaza. And the only way that would have been approved under your regulations is if those medical buildings were part of it. But at this point, they're saying, oh, no, those aren't ours. Those are just outbuildings in the back. So my question has been to them, well, if the only way you can get to them is through your driveway, you know, what is the, what do you believe is the legal arrangement there? So what I have suggested to them, they filed an application for one pylon sign, you know, up near the highway, and I've said, wouldn't it be great if we had a second pylon sign down by Denny's and Burger King that told the public in Enfield that there are two medical buildings back there, and that's where you can find your doctor?
Yeah.
So they're kind of working that, working that through. And then they said, well, we don't have any room there because it's only a stretch, but they also own Denny's, so, in front. So, you know, these are the types of things that we, you know, we try to work out so that, you know, we can have a comprehensive answer to the pylons rather than we only look at one little, one little thing as it comes through.
Roger, is there a way, too, we can take, you know, they're doing the market analysis for the TOD. If some of that, what the market will support, will that help us in some ways to be able to figure out what can go into like the Enfield Mall? Because, I mean, they're talking about they move out, you know, they set out within a...
Good point. And the TOD, whole discussion with the Economic Development Commission was to, you know, to try to tie the train station to the mall area. On our TOD grant, the State Office of Policy and Management has just come back and said that we really have to stay within a short distance of the train station. We can't go all the way to the mall. But we already captured a lot of that information already, so I think it will be helpful, and I think when Todd is here next week, you know, you can, you can probe him on that.
Perfect. That's what we got, so.
So the other thing I want to say is that from time to time, we, we hear about, applications take too long. And one of the things that we have been doing, which I report out in this report, and Jen has been on the front lines of this, is we've been doing what's called process mapping, where we take every process that we have in the planning office, and believe me, we got a lot, and we sort of map out every, every single step. And then you put it up on the wall and you say, you know, there's 50 steps here. Can we get it down to like seven? And once we do that, we're going to be working with the Information Technology Department on, on, on some of our ideas. And then working with Michael Sorriello and the Building Department. We want to integrate some of those processes. So if there are ways to speed up the process that don't interfere with our state statute mandated responsibilities, of course, we want to do that.
Roger, though, I found in the years that I've sat here, if you go to an A R T and they, the applicant follows A R T, they're in and out of here.
Yeah, but I mean, there are some things, for...
A reasonable amount of time.
For example, there's one, there's one thing that I, you know, once we get some of these process maps down and we can come back and talk to you about. But people, this is what happens. You approve these folks tonight. You got a special permit. And that builder sitting there has got a rolled up set of plans in his hands. And tomorrow morning, if we hadn't caught him in the hallway, he was going to walk into the Building Department and apply for his building permit.
Right.
And as Jim knows, they got to revise their plans. They got to submit a letter saying how they're going to comply with the letter, with the conditions of approval. They have to submit performance bonds, that we have to prepare a permit, a special permit that needs to be filed on the land records, and the secretary has to come in and sign it, and only after you're done with that. And that process, when you're dealing with some of these entities that we deal with, where they're, they're done remotely, where they have like people from all over the country and they FedEx in stuff to you and so forth, we have three of them, where we've had problems where they don't follow the letter of instruction. Everybody gets, everybody gets a letter, and then everybody gets, here's the next steps, but they just don't seem to be followed. And then a lot of times, what it is, is, well, if we just don't give it to you, eventually you'll get tired of us and you'll just say, oh, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I said. They follow A R T.
And so the only thing I've, I've thought about is, and so that intervening time from the time that they sit here and you raise your hand and say, seven to two, I mean, five to two, seven to zero, if, but this would be something that would have to be worked out with the Building Department. They could submit their building plans to the Building Department, and the Building Department could review them, but just not issue any permits until they did all of the other requirements. That would be a step that would speed things up. But the concern is, from the Building Department's standpoint, is, well, what if they never get that far and we've just wasted staff time on something that we don't know what is actually going forward?
Well, we've wasted a lot of time on some of our applications because they aren't following directly.
So, you know, for example, remember the restaurant down on, on King Street that came in here two or three months ago? Well, we went back and forth and back and forth and revised drawings and conversations, and they finally decided, well, we're not going to go forward. So in that instance, if they had gone to the Building Department, that would have been wasted effort. But I think that there are, there's a misunderstanding as to what all the requirements are, and, you know, nobody's, nobody sits in the Building Department or the Planning Office saying, geez, how long, let's figure out how long we can make this thing last.
Maybe I was wondering if that was a reason for the councilman's request Monday night because it had to deal with time or something.
All I know is, is a department meeting tomorrow, and one of the agenda items is the town manager received some complaints from some council people that everything took too long in the building and planning office. And so there's a department meeting tomorrow to report to us that there's complaints that everything takes too long.
Well, of course it does.
Well, you know, so, but it isn't very, you know, unless we have a specific, you know, like Olive Garden, we got a complaint, Olive Garden was taking too long. And what was the story is with the hurricanes in Florida, they were, their office was located in Florida. They were not receiving our correspondence that said what you had to do. So there's always, you know, I mean, it's like, we would be delighted to move Olive Garden faster. And so anyhow, but having said that, we, we have been for several months, process mapping everything.
That's the question.
And, you know, there's, certainly there could be ways to speed things up, but that's where you are. The other thing is, is just please read the report of all the stuff that this commission is doing or have, or has done, and I think the record speaks for itself.
I think at that meeting, just tell them to come in, prepared to follow our regulations, and they'll be in and out. And that's basically all they have to do.
Well, I mean, 53 man road has been around for a long time.
What do you mean?
It's been around for a long, long time. And what did it finally come down to? Could you put a stairway on the side of the building so you don't have to jump off the roof?
Yeah.
And could you give us the buffer zone that's required in the regulations?
Well, the fire department wanted to be able to drive around the building.
And they had to tear out the, they tear out the office that was built without permits that was flammable.
Yep. But the first thing they do is run to a councilman or the manager or somebody else, and it takes more time when you have to go to somebody else, and it doesn't work. All right.
Here's a prime example right here.
Yep. There's a thing here, Roger, that's been in here, the Connecticut mulch wanting, and nothing's happened yet. Have they followed? I know Michael's been out there and made recommendations. Did they ever take recommendations?
You referring to...
Connecticut mulch on...
Oh, Connecticut mulch. Basically, what they did is they wrote a letter to the planning office that said, we would like to substitute some trees for other trees. They didn't say where, they didn't say how many. And they wrote a letter that said, we would like our bond reduced for the trees that are healthy. So what we have said to them was, well, there's the two requests. One request is to modify your site plan. Tell us what trees that are on there that you don't want to put in and what you'll put in in place of that. Even, even to the point of taking their approved plan and saying, see this tree, we don't want to build it, we want to put a different tree. But we have to have something. And then the second thing is, well, how many trees do you believe you've already... And then the second thing is, well, how many trees do you believe you've already put in? And then we'd have to do a calculation. But what we had was not sufficient to bring before the commission. And so, we have so advised them and we're waiting for them to get back to something because I have to be able to come here and say, you, they were supposed to put in 25 trees, they only put in 12, four died, they want to substitute, you know what I mean?
But I, I understand Michael went out.
Yeah, Michael did go out and he made recommendations.
Did they follow-
But they didn't, but they didn't take the recommendations and, and, and indicate them on the site plan, even if they took the approved site plan and marked them.
So, they didn't follow Michael's plans or ours?
Well, I mean, they basically just cut and pasted from what Michael recommended and put it in a letter saying, this is what we want to do. But, you know, Michael recommended to them types of tree species that might grow better in their, in their soil. But we don't know where they would like to put them, how many, and which ones they don't want to put in.
To give the, yeah, to give a planting for the neighbors in, in that section of budding them. And that's the purpose, was to be a blind.
Yeah, going across the street, right?
Yeah. And this was a sort of a deal because they'd taken and they'd thrown that amicite all over the place.
And why that big berm near?
Yeah. Well, so you didn't give them the money, we haven't-
No, we, we have taken no action because our position was, and I actually met with Mike Suriel and explained it to him and he was fine, I think.
Okay, well-
That they just haven't submitted something that we can bring forward to you yet.
Okay. Yeah, but, no, wait a minute, you go-
One more thing, Roger, just as something that's been brought up in the past, that Azteca, Plaza, Plaza, whatever, they did that painting job, whatever became of that, they never came before.
Yeah, I, I sent an email to the gentleman about a week ago and I said that we apprised you of the fact that you had to come before the commission, you've never done anything. And so, unfortunately, time's up. We're going to have to issue a cease and desist if you don't come before the commission. And I said, oh, I've been waiting for permission from the, from the, the people that own the building. And so, he's been put on notice that he's been given adequate time. And he's been given all the forms and told he has to apply and come before the commission. So, hopefully he does.
It's interesting. I was down in Providence earlier in the week and went by a Azteca restaurant down there, all browns.
Yeah.
Very low color, low key browns. And it looked nice.
Well, that's like the song and dance we got until we had pictures that Nick had brought in of restaurants and they had to have the particular color. And he brought in the, the pictures from Florida and said, well, how come this one is not that color? They'll tell you one thing, they'll tell you what you want to hear, what they want.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Okay, administration, administrative approval, Roger?
No, we have none.
Okay, then on the agenda, this-
Oh, I should mention, you asked me to report it out. We're working with Prestec, where the Connecticut Water Company could not provide the pressure for them for their fire suppression system. And they're, they're going to put two water tanks that are, will be below the roof profile of the building in the back. And that seemed to be something that needed to be moved forward. And so, with consultation with the leadership, I did authorize them to do that.
There was a sort of an emergency or I wouldn't do it because they were in the middle. I don't know why the water company didn't tell us about the lack of water pressure for them because they had the plans. Beg pardon?
Was there an ART?
Oh, I don't know. Was there an ART?
There was an ART, yeah.
Connecticut Water doesn't go to the ARTs.
Oh, okay.
It is Connecticut Water.
We, we did try to work with them because there is a, a bigger main that's in the, that's right adjacent to their property that comes in from Summers. But they're on the wrong side of that main and they still weren't able to get the pressure up. So, we did actually facilitate some, we actually-
Roger, isn't that Hazardville Water over there?
No, it's Connecticut Water where Prestec is.
Where's Prestec?
It's right, right near-
Oh, Shaker Road, oh, I thought you were talking about-
It's actually right near Frank Camerata's property.
Oh, yeah.
And it's near also, and I, I don't think the commission heard earlier, but Frank Camerata's informed us that he has bought the tilt, 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 the old tilt con plant that's across the street and he plans on knocking it down. So, that will be a contribution. But there is a main that right next to there that comes in from Summers by Connecticut Water, except he's on the, they're on the wrong end of the pressure line. We actually facilitated a meeting between Connecticut Water and Prestec trying to get it to work and it just didn't work.
Okay, then Roger, on these applications that are coming in, this 1654 King Street, what, what is this?
1654 King Street is the Petronella, the Enfield Construction Site. And this was submitted, you recall that they needed to get approval for all the multiple uses down there. And so, we started with the zone change up in one corner. And then we adopted regulations to allow for limited outdoor storage. And this, this all got triggered by the woman who wants to, there is an automobile repair place in the back, which was only repairing the trucks from the business that are stored there. And she wanted to open it up to everybody, which means she would need an automobile location approval. So, which does require a special permit from this commission. But in addition, you would be reviewing all of the uses down there. And so, technically, it says, it's been, it was submitted as if it was just for the automobile location, but it's for the whole multipurpose site. There are still some issues with the site plan where they still want to have like what they're calling grandfathered intrusions in the buffer areas. There's no such thing as a grandfathered intrusion into a buffer area. So, I've advised them that, to, to get those grandfathered intrusions in the buffer areas off the map.
You have a lot of people with imaginary zoning regulations.
But I think with, with some of those changes, you know, it's, it's that, that stagger and, you know, that's another example, if you want to talk about, well, something took, took so long. That started with the, the woman, the optometrist who came in and wanted to put, wanted a sign, remember? And we're like, well, what exactly is this? It's, it's approved for, you know, it used to be a CLMP garage and then it went to Enfield Construction and then all of a sudden we got offices and retail and we got everything else in there. And so, we've been working diligently, hand in hand with the owner over a period of months to get them in compliance.
One of the reasons, Roger, you could say is because we had shortage of staff for several years and a lot of this went by because I guess it just slipped by, nobody here.
The, the offices were where those agents were.
So, all right. Woodlawn Streets, does she have-
This is, this is the one in which you, you brought it to our attention because she was advertising in the newspaper. So, we contacted her, she came in and applied. It is in a, in a building in which it is a basement and which the only way out is through a bulkhead. And the fire marshal's not crazy about it, the comments that we've received. But the applicant would like her day in front of you.
Now, that's the second question. Have you given her or does she have a copy of the state requirements? Because that's going to hang her up, I think. She needs a playground, she needs a fence, she's, there's quite a lot involved in that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the basic thing is you've got a, you'd put a daycare in a basement with below ground with no way, no way out, it's a bulkhead.
And I, I don't think she'd get a permit from the, from the state. I remember all this because we had the last application from the woman on the second floor. And the daycare was up on the second floor and I didn't go for that.
Yeah, and the woman had the daycare on the second, the accessory apartment and the daycare. She has been advised that she's in violation of both and she hasn't come back. So, you know, at some point, we're just going to have to let her know that she's in violation and issue a cease and desist because she's never come back. You know, you advised her to come back and have the daycare on the first floor and the accessory on the second floor.
But what did the state do?
Well, you remember, she had the license from the state for the daycare.
I thought she didn't, I thought they didn't-
Oh, no, she had one, she had one and she was operating it. And the whole thing started when she wanted, when she had to get relicensed and they, and the new form from the state has the town signing off. And we wouldn't sign off on it. And then the other issue was the accessory apartment. And as you recall, the person that was related by blood and blah, 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 is no longer in the picture. So, you know, we would need an affidavit from her that, that that accessory apartment was, just as we did tonight. So, we met with her for two hours one night from like 5:30 to 7:30. We went through the whole thing, this was months ago.
If we didn't sign off on it, why did, is the state letting her off?
I don't know if it's running or it's not running, but all I know is that she never came back, so we're going to have to go inspect.
Okay. But that's why I said, you got the regulations for us for that hearing. Could you find-
Right.
A copy and give it to this lady because it may make a difference.
She's going to have to find a new business.
Yeah. 1683 King Street. What building is that in? This can't be the same one.
Jen will explain this one to you.
This is another residential, or it was a residential house that zoned industrial and interlocking connections.
Is Mike on, Jen?
Yeah, supposedly is. Interlocking connections, I believe they have a building right on Enfield Street, you see the sign, they want to move over there and put a counseling office in the house. And then in the future, maybe build a different building for a daycare as well. But right now, they're focusing on the counseling office in the home and they have to make several site improvements and things. We've been working on their site plan for about a year now. So, they're finally coming before this commission with an application.
You're working on the site plan, so people coming in and having you do this design work and they-
Not normally.
No, she didn't do the site plan, but what she's saying is, like, this is the type of thing where somebody comes in and they say, we have a grant and we'd like to do something, but we're a nonprofit. And, you know, so it's sort of like, can we just get a building permit? And then you have to start and say, well, you know, this is a requirement and that's a requirement and so forth. And eventually, you get to the point of they actually hire a professional to do, to do a site plan. So, it's like an iteration of, well, what are we coming in for? Is it the daycare? Is it offices? And then the building, they went to the Building Department to renovate it so they could renovate it and the residential standard, even though they knew they were going to be using it for a commercial standard. So, you know, you have all of these sort of little bumps along the road. And, and even now, their site plan says that they wouldn't pave the driveway in and out. And both planning and the fire marshal has said that would have to be paved. But what I said to them is, don't change your site plan. I won't cause, I won't, we won't require you to do that, but that will be, we, our recommendation, the fire marshal's recommendation to do that. And if that's a condition of approval, then you give us the revised plan to show that.
Oh, God, I'll go into that.
Yeah, so, I mean, what I'm saying is when Jen says, and this is the thing, that well, that's been around for a year, that, that project is morphed.
Yeah, it started out, because there's also a barn on the property, and so they were, were thinking of putting the daycare in the barn and then they decided not to use the barn, so-
Okay, so instead of hiring and coming in with a professional or somebody that knows, they're coming in with an idea and wanting you to-
Straighten them out.
Straighten, yeah, help them.
We, we ended up having to give them the names of four or five professional firms that do this because they didn't know what they needed. And, you know, so like, we can't recommend any one firm, but we, you know, like, well, who do we hire to do it? And then you say, well, here's a list of five that, and then you can open up the yellow pages and you can choose anybody.
This is, of course, why it's taking so long too, if you're doing all this-
But, I mean, we do, we do a lot of assisting customers with what we call pre-application assistance. Because people come in, the, the woman that was here tonight with her garage, I mean, we worked with her. I mean, so, they may say, well, I've been working with the town for months, but it's, it's not like they came in and gave us a site plan that was ready to be distributed to departments and then end up here within a short period of time.
Well, the people you meet with tomorrow about this understand that. That's what bothers me because I understand that this goes through that. Okay. 95 Elm Street.
It's a pylon sign.
That's Coles and-
That's the Coles.
Well, that's all-
And I, well, the thing was, I've, I told them that it would be really helpful if they had a second sign on that, on that site and had a comprehensive solution. And so, we haven't, we haven't advertised that for public hearing yet because they were, they're going to be back to us shortly with what they can do with respect to that.
Like I referred to a doctor once and I ended up with, I didn't, you know, 193 or whatever it was, and it was a building in there too, but you don't realize-
You have a sign on the street that tells you that you can get to Leslie's by going in the back of Burger King.
Yeah.
And you can get the Burger, Burger King and his Denny's, but it doesn't tell you what those buildings are in the back or there's where your doctor is.
There's a nursery school there too.
Huh?
There's a nursery school.
Exactly.
Two of them. Okay. I, I, what have we got for next week? Oh, we got Manning Road, I mean, for the next regular meeting. We got Manning Road again.
Oh, and the other thing you asked me to mention is part of my report is the town is looking for an 824 from this commission on the disposition of Nathan Hale School. And they had asked that we could bring it up tonight. That was two days ago. I didn't want to walk on a request on the reuse of a school building on two days' notice. I consulted with the chair and we said that I would brief the commission tonight and you can all put your thinking caps on and we'll be getting you out material on that. One of the issues we have with the reuse of school buildings, and you have the school on Brainard Road, which was zoned commercial and now is vacant and it sits there, zoned commercial on Highland, surrounded by residential.
Seven acres.
One suggestion was to zone Nathan Hale School industrial, that's surrounded by residential. So, the suggestion I have made is that we add a section going forward to the zoning regulation that allows for the adaptive reuse of public buildings, but we specify what they could be used for. And we don't change the zone from residential, we don't open it up to industrial. But it would, you come in and you say ahead of time, okay, it would be suitable for assisted living or nonprofit or what have you, but not necessarily a manufacturing plant. So, but at this point in time, the only request is for a favorable report that the town would dispose of the property. So, the question is, do you want to put any conditions on that, which you'd be in favor of disposing of the property, provided it was for- of disposing of the property, provided it was for a list of uses? Or are you going to say, we're okay with disposing of that property and then we sort out what it's used for at another point in time?
I had a brainstorm last night and I talked to Roger this morning and I would suggest that we come with uses and send them back to the council for this. But hearing the problems that are going on with Blair Manor, this is a building that would adapt itself to reuse as a nursing home if they put out a request for proposal for a nursing home corporation. And much like we're converting, or they are converting St. Adalbert's to living quarters, it would be, you have a cafeteria, you have, already there, you have a cafeteria, you have a lunchroom and you have a gym.
And the nurse's office.
And you have the nurse's office. So, yeah, so you have something that could be converted to a nursing home very easily and you have, I don't know how many acres, there's seven probably, so you have recreation or an area for walk out back there. And you have enough for parking and it would fit in a residential area.
Exactly.
But that was a brainstorm I had, but come up with some other things that could be done and we could send them for that.
Well, the issue, you have also the issue right now of Fermi, because Fermi was approved as a school, there's no other approval from this commission and things are being moved into that building. So the correct process would be to come to this commission with a plan and that you would approve. And we also have the issue with the Alcon School. We were approached by the engineering department to increase the parking lot at Alcon, what's called Alcon School, by 70% and possibly take up the basketball courts that are in the back. The only approval for that building is as a school. Right now, it has the administrative offices of the Board of Education, it has the Information Technology Department, and it does have an educational component in there. And apparently, there's a conflict on parking because the Board of Ed does teacher training in there, the Information Technology Department does training in there. So, you know, the request was from engineering to increase the parking lot 70% and take up the basketball courts. So, I mean, the real question is, what is that building? And are those basketball courts a recreational facility that somebody owns or are they left over from the school?
The town has used them for recreation, the kids in that area have no other place to?
Right, and so the question is, is this commission okay with taking up the basketball courts and making it parking? So, I mean, we have that, all of the issues of the public buildings, but technically, when a school is no longer a school, it gets, the building gets turned over to the town and then the town has to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission and say, this is what we want to use it for. So, right now, we have a request from the Enfield Adult Education to grant a certificate of zoning compliance for Fermi School, for them to go in there. And I don't know on, you know, I don't know what's going out in there in addition or besides or I don't know how, even how to evaluate that. So that came in today. One could say, well, adult education is an educational use, but the question really is, is that still an educational building under the control of the Board of Education or is that a town building? Because under state statute, once a building is no longer used for education, it reverts to the town and becomes a town building.
But the understanding is, my understanding and the way it works is that it is a town building, but because they are still using it for educational purposes, whether they're holding adult, like, for different adult ed classes, things like that, that it's still, it has a relationship with the Board of Ed. And I know that that had hailed, they were talking, they were keeping it as a school for the purpose of storing books and things there in order to keep it considered a school so that way we wouldn't have to pay back that bond money that we owed for the renovations on the school. So there's a lot of complications there, but my, I know when they turned them over, that is the, actually, the town owns them and maintains them, but the school has the right to like utilize them, I guess, according to their, that agreement they have with them. So, yes, it gets very complicated.
But on the situation with, I lost my train of thought, but what I'm saying is, like, okay, so we could grant, we could say, okay, that's, I mean, we give them a letter that says, yeah, adult education is according to zoning or whatever, but we don't know what part of the building they're using, what the rest of the building's going to be for, we don't have anything. And so, and you look at the zoning and the zoning allows a school. So if you're going to start and move other things in there, I mean, there has to be a plan. And so it all goes back to this question of, what are we doing with? And so with respect to Alcon School, everybody's kind of moved in there. And then all of a sudden, they say, oops, you know, this doesn't really work because if we have teacher training and we have technology training at the same time, we don't have a place to park, so let's tear up the parking lot, the basketball courts and put in parking. So it really is an issue that needs to be addressed because it puts staff in a very awkward place because what we get asked is, well, why can't we just pave that over and make a parking lot? And why can't we just tear up the basketball courts because, well, why does that have to go to planning and zoning?
Roger, I think your proposal of writing up a proposal for regulations on schools and having it titled the way you stated is a good idea and get that so, because I see other buildings are going to be fixed that way too if we?
Right, oh, I know, my, the point was, Mr. Chairman, which is on, is on Nathan Hale, the purpose of the 824 referral is so that the town can put out an RFP to use the building. So then there would be, then people would be responding to the RFP, but the only allowed use under zoning right now is as a school or residential. So, you know, they?
We have to know if?
Well, they might pay it off under the RFP.
That's, yeah, but the last we heard it was that they were going to hold it as a school building because of the fact that the bond, we owe, we owe the state money back from the renovations that were done. So that was the last understanding that I knew of, so that school was going to sit because they had to find a way.
That's what it said in the paper.
That's why they store in the books, so it's still?
Store in the books, exactly, it's considered an educational facility.
Right, and that's why I'm briefing, that's why I'm briefing the commission on our information, which is an RFP is being drafted.
Yeah.
And so the action of your 824 would be in effect to say, we're okay with you disposing of the building by an RFP. The question becomes, okay, now you've got somebody that in good faith responds to an RFP and says, we want to, you know, manufacture widgets there.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. I guess it's important too for the public to know, a lot of people already know the process and know what's going on with Hale, so they're all going to be like, what's going on? Because they've been told, so like when we?
Well, that's why I, I thought that would not be an imposition in that area.
No, no, I think, yes, we can, we can be proactive about what we want to do with those, definitely, yes.
The town council already told us one thing, this is what we're doing with the school.
I know, but if we do suggestions?
Now they're saying, oh, we don't want to do that anymore.
Well, no, because it's zoned, we can change the zone and work with the council. That's why they're asking for a 24 and if we say, these are our suggestions and that we don't want it, you don't want that industrial out there.
That's not the issue, it's more, I'm not saying that there's an issue for planning and zoning just to be proactive and have recommendations for things. What I'm saying is, if this is the case, the residents need to know as well the information.
If they put it out as an available building for industrial, you don't want industrial in there.
Oh, of course, I mean, and we'll deal with that, we'll figure out what we're going to, what kind of recommendations we're going to do, so, yeah.
So that's why I said to Roger, write up that proposal for vacant school buildings so that we have it to work on.
I'm just suggesting that when you do the 824, you begin to specify the types of uses that would be appropriate in that building so that when the RFP goes out, that RFP will be consistent with something that this commission would approve.
It's the same with the one up on Brained Road that was given to, and used industrial. You've got seven acres up there, right up against a residential that shouldn't be industrial.
Shouldn't be an abandoned building either, but it is.
Well, no, it is now, but it's not owned by the town anymore.
Still a slum.
I know, but if we change the zone on it and go back to what Roger's proposing for school buildings, then we have some control.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know, is that, so Roger, all of these are, 2878 is going to take a while. I don't think the sign or King Street or Woodland Street would take too long if they're I would take, I would take, put King Street last on the agenda.
Which, you got, you got two King Streets.
The 2878, but I?
Put that last.
Yeah, but because we, that Manning Road is going to take a while, I'm afraid.
Yeah, it's like a big turn on for that.
It's going to, I don't know, maybe we got too long an agenda.
Well, you got 53 Manning Road, which may take a while.
That's what I said.
We'll get you orders pizzas.
Well, can we take 2878 King Street and move that to next month?
Jen, I think there's a grant that they're trying to meet the timeframe on that one. This is interlocking.
I thought it was 2878, 1654 King Street?
2878.
Yeah, that's Petronella.
Oh, that's Petronella.
24.
You've got a situation there with that woman who, you know, she's operating now on the trucks that are there, she would like to open up?
How long's it going to take?
It really depends upon whether they follow staff comments and make the revisions or whether they come in here and want to get it approved the way they submitted it.
Well, that's always the question.
Exactly right.
But the mandatory?
We have plenty of time on all of them.
What's the matter?
I thought we have until 10:30 and then we have to make a move.
11.
Yeah, 1654 King Street does not have to be opened until October the 27th.
All right, so put it on the first meeting in October.
That's today.
That is, that is next meeting.
First meeting in November.
We would need an extension.
Is that all right?
We would need an extension from them.
All right.
So you can put it on, you can open and continue it, but you have to at least open it unless they agree to an extension.
Okay. I know.
And the villages refiled yesterday as well. They had withdrawn temporarily based upon the ART, they refiled yesterday.
This is why it's more important that these people go to ART, they get things straight and they know that they're in and out. Because we block ourselves up and we, the commission is spending more time reading stuff that makes no sense because it's coming back again in a very, a different form.
Yeah.
Not to mention staff.
I looked at the nice stuff Rich did on the last maps and, I mean, he's supposed to spend hours on them. And for what?
I'll do it again.
I know, he'll do it again. I guess he's, needs practice, but it's a lot of work.
Yeah, it's a fine line because if we don't give them to you, then we don't get your initial reaction to them, which we can then convey to the applicant.
That's why it's very important that they go to ART and they don't use us as a sounding board, they check with the ART first.
Mr. Chairman, in order to continue to talk to you, I cannot look at that side of the?
You know, she tried to tell me there was time to, they had to vote to extend.
So it would be helpful if you looked at that side of the room and then wanted to know if you wanted to concur with them or not.
I, if, well, then go with the four and 53, we'll do what we can do.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Okay. All these women have, must have important dates.